Okay, we're ready. Welcome to the Callexico City Council, Callexico Redevelopment and Accessory Agency, Collection for Financing Authority. Today is, actually, let me see, November twenty 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 four, it's about six fifty seven P M. Open session, call to order, and we'll go with rock on.
Mayor Camilo Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Protem Javier Moreno.
Here.
Councilmember Gloria Romo.
Here.
Councilmember Victor Legaspi.
Present.
Councilmember Lisa Talenda.
Here.
We have coral.
Thank you. Now, we're going to go ahead and start with the pledge. You can just please get up and, Mr. Talenda, you can listen to the pledge.
Ready, begin. I declare that the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands on our nation under God, indivisible, infinite in justice and law.
Initial statement. Together, we pledge to provide effective and efficient services in a satisfactory and respectful manner to improve the quality of life for all, where we need to work, community, be good at it.
And now pass through to the legislative seat.
Mayor Garcia and councilmember, and those that are present here this evening, may the Lord bless you always. We're going to ask the Lord's blessing upon our meeting tonight, but I would also like to add a prayer of thanksgiving. Most of us will be celebrating Thanksgiving with our families next Thursday, and I think it's appropriate to give thanks to the Lord even tonight. Amen? I want to read something, though. I want to quote Governor Bradford, who was the governor of Plymouth Colony. He said this three years after they arrived in Plymouth. He says this: "To all you pilgrims, inasmuch as the great Father has given us this year an abundance harvests of Indian corn, wheat, peas, quashes, and garden vegetables, and has made the forest to abound with game and the sea with fish and..." and garden vegetables, and has made the forest to abound with game and the sea with fish and clams, and inasmuch as he has protected us from the raids, has spared us from pestilence and disease, has granted us freedom to worship God according to the dictates of our own conscience. Now I, your magistrate, do proclaim that all you pilgrims, with your wives and your little ones, do gather in your homes between the hours of nine and twelve in the daytime on Thursday, November the 29th of the year of our Lord, 1,623, that's 1623, and the third, and the third year since you pilgrims landed on this Plymouth Rock and there render thanksgiving to Almighty God for all his blessings." And with these thoughts in mind, I want to add Psalm 106, verse one, says, "Praise the Lord, O give thanks to the Lord, for he is good; for his steadfast love endures forever." Let us pray. Father in heaven, first of all, Lord, we do want to give you thanks for your blessings, God. They are so abundant, Lord. And God, I thank you for the families that are here, present, Lord, and the families that they represent, Lord, as they would gather next Thursday. God, may they always remember that there's a God in heaven who blesses, and may we give thanks. And tonight, we gather here and we give you thanks. And Lord, we also ask a blessing upon the meeting here tonight. Give the council members the wisdom, God, and Lord, may they be a blessing to this city and to the community. God, we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen? Happy Thanksgiving and God bless you all.
Thank you. Colonel, you can get a close session number.
Correct. City Council meeting closed session. Items described on the agenda. Received direction on the items, but no report of watches were taken.
Thank you. Now, we move on to the approval of the agenda. I believe there is an emergency item that will be added to thirteen, letter A, thirteen A.
Correct. And this is an item that came to the notice of the city after the posting of the agenda, and it's an item that the city needs to take action on immediately. And correct, the recommendation is to add this item as number thirteen A to today's agenda.
So with that, if I can have an approval for the, a motion for approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Do you have a second? Thank you. That will be a call.
Mayor Camilo García.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Javier Moreno.
Yes.
Councilmember Gloria Romo.
Yes.
Councilmember Victor Legazpi.
Yes.
Councilmember Lisa Tailenda.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Now, we move on to presentations, and before I start that, I want to apologize. We ran a little bit, you know, into some extended closed session. So, but thank you for waiting. I know we love, you know, having guests and especially champions. So with that, I would love to invite our volleyball champions, you know, Lady Bulldogs, you know, for the Desert League Champions. So if I can have you come up, your coach, if your coach would like to come up and say a few words and through your, you know, championship, championship games that you had and time that you had in accomplishing that, you know, this is the time, if you want to come up and say a few words?
Don't run.
Okay.
Buenas tardes a todos.
Buenas tardes.
Este, es un honor para nosotros estar con el distinguido panel, con los invitados, y nada más venimos a compartir con ustedes el campeonato del equipo de voleibol de, de las Lady Bulldogs en Desert League. Hicimos una temporada perfecta, invictos, no perdieron ningún set. El trabajo pues obviamente principalmente de las jugadoras, la coach Denise que no está ahorita con nosotros. Y fuimos así ayer, nos quedamos a un paso de llegar a semifinales. Aún así estuvo perfecta la temporada. Y pues darle gracias a las muchachas aquí en presencia de ustedes y gracias a ustedes, a la ciudad por apoyarlos.
Gracias.
Y si puede presentarlas, las que están aquí. Okay. Así como las presenta si quieren venir aquí para que reciban certificado y una fotografía con nosotros aquí.
Okay. García Lizaláiz. Yulisa Luna. Vanessa Legazpi. Johana Gallego. Alexa Aguilar. Sisi Sierra. Emi García. Katia Ceballos. También los presentes está Isabel Esquer.
Bueno, eso es parte del equipo. Ah, mi nombre Humberto Sierra, coach y la coach del equipo también Denise Lugo. Gracias.
I guess I'm the camera guy.
Gracias. El galante. Okay, a petición de un council member, si podemos pedirlas a los papás que se paren también para reconocerlos. If we have the parents here from the players, if you can get up, so you can get up, you know, recognized also, because it takes time and effort and going to San Diego to games and... Thank you.
So we don't have to wake up at five in the morning anymore? We're done? We're done?
So, and now we're going to move on to item number eight, which is small businesses, mayor of recognition. And how this came about is because, and this is going to be an ongoing item, a standing item on the agenda, to recognize our local businesses. But aside from recognizing our local businesses, also having an opportunity to feature them also, to make sure that we know. And sometimes we walk by, we drive by some of these businesses, and we don't even know what they sell, we don't even know, and go in and patronize these, these, these businesses. So again, like I said, this will be an ongoing item, and today we have four businesses that have been, you know, recognized. So I know we have some businesses that couldn't make it today, but something came up. But we'll go ahead and start with... This is at random. I didn't, uh... The name is a little bit interesting, which that's how it got my attention. Mary Jane Candy Shop. So...
So, if you're por ahí, si no, no más, nos puedes decir unas cuantas palabras de qué es lo que es su negocio, su nombre, y cuánto tiempo lleva aquí con Caléxico.
Buenas tardes a todos. Es un placer estar aquí este día y queremos agradecer por este reconocimiento. Nosotros somos una dulcería. El nombre, yo sé que es un poco polémico, Mary Jane, este, pero esa es nombre mío y de, y mi hija y bueno, asimprendimos. Es una dulcería y estamos por la calle Imperial, so, enfrente de, a McDonald's. Y bueno, y hablado de Chili Bertos. Y bueno, nos sentimos felices de emprender este negocio que es familiar. Vendemos todo, todo lo que son dulces mexicanos, este, ya no tienen que ir a, a Mexicali porque los precios están accesibles mejor quizás. Y bueno, se evitan las filas y nos apoyan a nosotros. Para nosotros ha sido un poco difícil porque emprendimos nuestro negocio a tres meses antes de la pandemia. Entonces sí ha sido difícil, pero bueno, tenemos la actitud y bueno, tenemos que trabajar de una manera y bueno, eso es nuestro, nuestro negocio y bueno, ahí estamos para servirles a todos y bueno, gracias.
Gracias. I'm gonna call for more businesses, so si me permiten voy a llamar cuatro negocios más, si me esperen ahí para que después al último tomamos una fotografía y les presentamos certificado. Ahora tengo el placer de llamar también al podium Taco Mix, Tacos and Beer. So I think that has been an institution here in Caléxico.
Lo mismo, si los invito a que nos dirijan un poquito de, acerca de su negocio, aunque todos sabemos.
Hola, buenas noches. Gracias. Este honor es muy grande para nosotros. Son treinta y dos años que hemos avanzado junto con la ciudad de Caléxico gracias a las tres décadas de administración que nos han dado esa oportunidad de estar aquí en Caléxico, en las buenas y en las malas. Nuestro, nuestro negocio empezó con unas carretitas de tacos. Muchos de ustedes nos miraban en los eventos, las cermeses de aquí de Caléxico. Hemos crecido gracias a la comunidad de Caléxico, gracias a nuestra gente, a nuestro pueblo. Hemos, este, avanzado contra viento y marea. Hemos estado en las buenas y en las malas y aquí, gracias a Dios, treinta y dos años establecidos aquí en el 900 West Birch Street de Caléxico. Dios nos ha dado muchas bendiciones a nuestra familia, aquí a mi hermosa esposa, que nunca, este, ha cedido todo el tiempo a un lado de mí avanzando, como les dije, en las buenas y en las malas, pero aquí estamos sirviendo, pues no los mejores tacos de Caléxico, pero los mismos tacos con los que empezamos. Sí, muchos de ustedes ya los han probado, y nuestra nueva generación, nuestro hijo, que es el que va, este, a continuar el negocio. Si ustedes no lo permiten, y también la administración nos da esa bendición también, y que Dios, ¿verdad? Muchas gracias. No sé si tú quieres dar algo.
Si me esperen ahí un momentito para que llamemos a los demás negocios para después tomar una fotografía. Y ahora, I guess a new kid in town, also Chili Bertos Tacos and Breakfast LLC.
Pues muchas gracias, muchas gracias a la ciudad por darnos la oportunidad de... Pues muy buenas tardes. Gracias a todos por estar aquí este día con nosotros. Le agradecemos a la ciudad por tomarse la molestia, el tiempo de reconocer a los negocios locales. Es un honor estar aquí. Estamos súper agradecidos y muy honrados de que se hayan tomado ese, ese tiempo. Esto es lo que es el, el trabajo día a día y pues ahorita estamos como mirando que tiene su recompensa el estar echándole, como se dice ecologicamente, echándole ganas. Y pues muchas gracias a la comunidad que nos ha cogido muy bien y ahí vamos poco a poquito, sin publicidad, sin nada, ha sido todo de boca en boca. Y, y pues a los que no han tenido la oportunidad de conocernos, pues los invitamos a la 717 en la Avenida Imperial, enfrente del McDonald's, a un lado de, de la dulcería Mary Jane. Y pues esto no hubiera sido posible sin mi hermano y mi papá, que, que pues ellos han sido, pues los pilares de este proyecto y pues, pues... Así es que muchísimas gracias y los esperamos y espero mirarlos pronto y estamos para servirles.
I was informed that the other two businesses that were going to be featured in that here, so we will have them at a later meeting. But what I would like to do now, I know you are colleagues, you're competitors to a certain point, but I want to have you here, so together. So you can come up and so we can take a picture and present your certificate.
¿Quién va a tomar la foto?
Actually, an official.
An official.
You'll email it, so.
Let me get one more here.
Before we take the last picture, I think we just, Polls, Mi Pollo, it's here, right? Standing.
Sí. Oh, véngase también ustedes, son tres concellos también. Estaban muy callados. Le vamos a dar la oportunidad a la señora, este, a...
Buenas noches.
Buenas noches.
Creo que no me veían, ¿verdad?
No.
¿Y aquí sí me ven?
Sí.
Okay. Buenas noches, muchas gracias, especialmente a todos los consejeros aquí por tomar en cuenta la comunidad y a los negocios locales. Nuestro negocio es Polls, Mi Pollo, es venta de pollo. Este, estamos en el 1074 East Col Road, en la plaza, hoy, Caléxico Garden Mall se llama. Ahí estamos para atenderlos de lunes a sábado y, este, muchas gracias a toda la comunidad, así como Chili Bertos. Estamos de boca en boca. No hacemos casi publicidad, pero tenemos unos clientes, la verdad que son excelentes todos, y esperamos verlos ahí cuando gusten. Y gracias.
Thank you. And now we move on to a presentation, and this is a presentation that I had a chance to see at the last ICTC meeting that I think is worth... And this is a presentation that I had a chance to see at the last ICTC meeting that I think is worth bringing to, to the community, to not just the council, but the, the community. ICTC has done a great job of really working on not just in infrastructure, but on projects that have a great impact in our community and this is an example of that. So with that I'll have Mr. Aguirre, David Aguirre, do a presentation, Executive Director of ICTC.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to the honorable members of the council and the public. Thank you for the opportunity to share some information about our recently completed project. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening and I can also attest, I haven't had the opportunity to go to some of the businesses that were noted, but I have had the tacos from Taco Mix and they're fantastic, so I recommend you go there if you haven't been there. So the project that I'll be presenting on today is the Caléxico East Port of Entry Bridge Widening Project. Just some information about the Caléxico East Port of Entry. Approximately about four hundred and fifty thousand trucks entered the US from Mexico. That is a one percent increase from 2022. Six point two percent of all overall trucks crossing to the US from Mexico as well at this port of, this port of entry. There's also about five hundred thousand pedestrian crossing when we last took measurements of the data. I can honestly say now, since we've completed the project, we've seen an increase in all areas of port crossings, so whether that be pedestrian crossings, vehicle crossings, passenger vehicle crossings and commercial truck crossings as well. Overall, the, the port of entry actually sees about one point two billion dollars in imports. So it's kind of unique to, to realize that you have such an important piece of infrastructure essentially in our backyards. That helps move so much goods throughout not only the Imperial County but also the state itself. So our project purpose, purpose of the project was to widen the existing Caléxico East Port of Entry Bridge over the All American Canal to provide additional capacity for vehicles moving across the port. So there was a number of areas that we wanted to make sure that we tried to address, some concerns that we tried to address. That, those concerns being environmental, we wanted to make sure that we improved air quality and reduced GHD gas emissions. We wanted to try to improve traffic congestion, which would require ultimately improving traffic flow across the port and reducing wait times. And then also there's economic impacts that we see obviously from a perspective of vehicles queuing at the port. The, the additional capacity would allow vehicles to move quicker through the port as well. So our project scope was to widen the bridge on the east side to minimize traffic impacts during construction and reduce construction costs. We added a total of four vehicle lanes, two commercial vehicle lanes and two passenger vehicle lanes. So prior to the construction efforts, there were four commercial lanes, two southbound, two northbound. After the construction, there is three northbound, three southbound. As it pertains to the, the passenger vehicle lanes before the construction, there were three passenger vehicle lanes heading north. Now after the construction, once there's, there's some minor improvements that are still taking place from Customs and Border Protection, but there should be five vehicle lanes that are heading northbound. In, in addition to that, we also shifted the existing northbound pedestrian walkway to the east to allow capacity for the additional lanes. We added an eight foot shoulder near the commercial vehicle lanes and that would be on the east side of the port, of the bridge. That of course is meant to help navigate vehicles that may be downed, so it allows us to move them over and allow traffic to continue moving. And then of course we added new concrete barriers, minor modifications to the existing landscape, drainage, signage, security and lighting. So from a project funding perspective, this project has taken us years to essentially navigate through. And as most projects do, especially projects of this magnitude, the total project funding for this project was about thirty-two and a half million. With the first part being three million from the California Transportation Commission's Trade Corridor Enhancement Program. That was used to develop the project study report, which was developed by Caltrans, who was a tremendous partner as we developed this project. We also secured a twenty million dollar US Department of Transportation Better Utilizing Investment to Leverage Development Grant, which is a, it's called Build, but it has recently changed its name to Raise. We also secured an additional seven point five million dollars through the Trade Corridor Enhancement Program. And the, the local transportation authority also contributed an additional two million dollars. And that is through the, the sales tax that is implemented here in the Imperial County. So it just goes to show you that sales tax measures in the Imperial County work and they're being utilized to provide critical infrastructure improvements to the Imperial County. Project pre-construction schedule, so in April of 2020, we completed the environmental document for the project, which generally takes a while to complete, there, you have to go through a number of steps and a number of reviews to actually get that completed. May of 2020, we completed the project study report again with our partnership with Caltrans. January of 2021, we completed the request for proposal for the project. In March of 2021, we proceeded with the notice to proceed for the project. Now this project is unique, it's, it's, we utilize the method of, that is called the design-build. So what that ultimately means is we went through the procurement process and ultimately hired a contractor that had the designer and the construction contractor under the same umbrella. So that allowed us to move forward with the, the design portion quicker and allowed us to move towards construction a lot faster versus the normal process which is design, bid, build. And in May of 2021, we began construction. So it took us a few months to actually navigate through the design process of the project. And of course, this project is, is fairly significant, it has a lot of structures that needed to be designed by various engineering disciplines, including structural engineers, civil engineers, mechanical engineers and electrical engineers as well. Some of the project challenges that we had for this project was, one, building the construction of the bridge over the All American Canal. That's a rather unique prospect associated with this project because the, the All American Canal is a critical land or land, water delivery system in Imperial County. So when we were actually going through construction, we had to install a series of netting under the existing bridge so that no debris would actually fall into the canal. So that's a rather unique position that you have to take for projects of this magnitude and all over the All American Canal. We also have to obtain a presidential permit, so that is a unique permit that is solely associated with projects that are at ports of entry or relocating border walls. In our case, we had to relocate a portion of the border wall slightly to the east to accommodate for the additional infrastructure improvements. We also wanted to make sure that we minimize the impact of border traffic. So what that means is what we did for construction was we constructed a lot of the facility at night. So the port remained open during normal business hours and once the port closed, we essentially began construction efforts. A lot of the, the majority of the project actually was done at night, during the summertime, during the wintertime. So it was a, it was a unique experience having to actually go onsite at one, two in the morning and essentially kind of review what was going on in terms of the construction efforts for the project. And then of course, the, the probably the most critical aspect of the project was our coordination between the US and Mexico. Our project would not realize its full potential without our partnership with Mexico. Mexico needed to build infrastructure improvements to match what we were doing on our side. So there was a lot of coordination that took place on a daily basis with our partners in Mexico to make sure that we were able to deliver both sides of the project, so Mexico had a significant improvement project on their end as well. But it, there was a lot of coordination, there was a lot of meetings that took place right at the border to make sure that we were all working together to make sure that we were able to deliver the project the way it was ultimately intended to. So the project was done in four stages, four construction stages. The first stage was to design and construct the actual bridge, the newly expanded bridge. So as we worked to expand the bridge, there was a lot of demo activity that, that took place for the existing infrastructure that was on the east side of the bridge. That included the access tunnels that CBP uses to move around the canal on the north side and the, and the south side. We, there was a lot of demolition activities that took place to make sure that we could accommodate the expansion of the bridge. So there was a lot of importing of dirt, things along those lines. At one of the more critical stages, parts of stage one, excuse me, was actually constructing the bridge. So the bridge itself, the, the structural components of the bridge had a number of different piles that were ultimately drilled into the ground to make sure that the structural support of the bridge would handle the truck load that was ultimately running through it on a daily basis. In addition to that, there were six steel girders that were installed that were essentially the framework of the bridge. Those steel girders were a hundred and seventy-two feet long, all of those steel girders were installed at night. They were, you can see in the images, their crane lifted on both sides to make sure that we can install them and they were essentially welded to the existing structure at, in the evenings on the, when we undertook that effort. That was, I can't remember the exact timeframe, but I, I do recall that taking place at two in the morning. Being out there, it was in the summer and there was a lot of bugs, so it wasn't the funnest time to have to go through that. But there's some pictures of some of the concrete reinforcement work that went into the bridge itself. Again, there was a, a number of structural components that took place under the concrete work to make sure that the bridge could support the, the truck traffic that was ultimately gonna drive over it on a daily basis. Here are some images of the actual steel components of the bridge, so they're on top of the steel girders, there's a number of rebar infrastructure that is implemented. There's also steel components and then there was ultimately concrete that was ultimately implemented as well. So there's, the, the, the bridge itself is a, is a heavily reinforced bridge to make sure that it could withstand the, the pressure of all the, the truck traffic, either idling or driving through it on a, on a regular basis. And the last stage of stage one was actually removing the border wall. So we removed the border wall and we actually relocated the existed, the same border wall slightly to the east to accommodate the infrastructure improvements. What you see on the images there is when the border wall was removed, the, the cinder block wall that you see in the images is actually Mexico's border wall. And so we essentially relocated it slightly to the east, we had to have a presidential permit to be able to do that. And all of this work took place within a short period of time and it was under surveillance twenty-four hours a day by our partners at CBP as we worked through construction to move quickly, as quickly as possible. So construction stage two, which was the pedestrian crossing, once we built the new bridge structure and it was open to traffic, we were able to move forward to the next stages, which included the pedestrian crossing. So we, the exist, the, the pedestrian crossing that existed before, we demoed all of the walls to make sure that we can convert that to an actual roadway. So when we, when we demolished that, we began moving forward with installing the new pedestrian crossing, which included new concrete barriers, lighting, infrastructure, fencing and other security measures to make sure that the public could be able to move across the border safely. And there's some images of some of the infrastructure work that went into that. Stage three of the project included the passenger vehicle lanes. So once we completed the pedestrian crossing, we were able to move over to the, the new passenger vehicle lanes. Again, and for us to be able to move forward to the next stage of development of the project, we needed to finish the stage before. Stage one needed to be completed to move to stage two, stage two needed to be completed to move to stage three and, and ultimately stage three needed to be completed and moved to stage four. Within stage four, we again demoed a lot of the, or the majority of the pedestrian crossing that was there before. That was ultimately converted into two additional passenger vehicle lanes, so you see some of the infrastructure there as well. The, the infrastructure isn't as significant as was developed for the commercial, the commercial side because of the, the amount of weight of the vehicles that are actually crossing it. But nonetheless, it did give us some additional capacity once we were completed with the project. There's some additional images of the, of the new passenger vehicle lanes. Hopefully you guys have had an opportunity to actually drive through them and see the, the new infrastructure. Construction stage four, which was striping and bridge maintenance. Striping is pretty straightforward, that essentially just delineates the, the way traffic's gonna move through the lanes. But one of the key components that we did for this project is we had to retrofit the existing portions of the existing bridge. So there's, there's a number of infrastructure components that are built into the bridge, under the bridge. We went through all of that, we went, we reviewed all of that infrastructure and made sure that it was still capable of supporting the, the truck traffic and the vehicle movements on the bridge. So if there was issues associated with that, the infrastructure is rather old still. We made sure that we were able to retrofit it and improve that infrastructure to make sure that we extended the life of the existing bridge. So project completion, these are just some aerial shots of what the project actually looks like now. You can see, I know it's kind of rather small, but you can see the, the infrastructure improvements that we implemented. Again, as a result of the project, we now have three northbound lanes, three southbound lanes for commercial truck traffic, five northbound lanes for passenger vehicle lanes and then a new and improved pedestrian crossing right in the middle of both of the lane types. Also, a key component of the project was again our coordination with Mexico and making sure that we were able to deliver the project on both sides. We, we coordinated a lot of the different, a lot of different things associated with the project throughout the life. Some of the things that came out were how we, how truck traffic actually moved to the port. Initially, this project was meant to have four more, four northbound lanes heading into the US and two southbound lanes. What ultimately transpired was an agreement on both sides to allow three northbound and three southbound lanes to allow truck traffic to move better on both sides of the board. So again, just goes to show the partnership that we developed with Mexico throughout the life of the project and the ability to work together to ensure that we're doing improvements that benefit both sides. Again, this project would not be possible without all of the partners that we worked with. GSA, which is the General Services Administration that actually owns the port. CBP, Customs and Border Protection for all of their assistance throughout the, the project development. Caltrans was a key partner in the development of the project, IID and our partners in Mexico, Iwanas, who ultimately helps control the port, they were a fantastic partner to work with throughout the life of the project. And that concludes my presentation, thank you for affording me the opportunity to, to share with you our project. Again, this was a, a critical project for us to deliver for the Imperial County region and what it ultimately means for us in our, in our partnership with Mexico. This isn't the last project that we're working on, we actually, we will be working on the development of a transit center near the Caléxico East Port of Entry. In addition to that, we should be hopefully providing transit services from the East Port of Entry to downtown Caléxico in the near future. So lots of other fun projects to take place, we're heavily invested in the east port and we want to make sure that we continue to hear what the public wants and try to deliver on those, on those needs that were ultimately coming from the east port and, and try to move people to wherever they need to go within the Imperial County. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David, and before you leave, I know that this, the reason why I invited David to come down and provide this presentation is not just because I wanted to showcase this project, but the impact that this has, he said it to Imperial County, to the region, but it's also Caléxico. And David, if you can share a little bit more on the grant that, you know, ICTC was able to obtain that will actually have a tremendous impact on Caléxico also. I know that, that there is a timeline of 2030, but I know that also ICTC has done projects in record time. And you forgot to mention one, one detail that it's, it's really, really important here in this project. What was the cost, you know, the projection of, of the cost of this project and what was the final cost?
We had initially estimated the project to be about twenty-seven million, twenty-eight million. The project in total was delivered for about twenty-four and a half million dollars. So there was a, there was a pretty sizable savings towards the project and that again is likely due to partnerships that we established, making sure that we communicated throughout the life of the project and the design-build component as well, that allowed us to be able to co-develop the design of the project while also moving forward towards construction as well. while also moving forward towards construction as well.
So again, this is the importance of collaboration and partnerships.
Absolutely.
That, you know, we need to continue, we will continue to be part of that. But going back to the grant, you know, if you can just share that with us?
Sure, sure. ICTC, and I'm assuming you're talking about the transit center?
Correct.
Yes, okay. So ICTC was recently awarded a $12.6 million Transit Inner City Rail Capital Program. I know it's a mouthful in terms of the program itself, through the state of California, California State Transportation Agency, to develop a transit center near the East Port of Entry. Now that, the funding will essentially go towards the design of the facility and the construction of the facility in addition to acquiring transit vehicles and providing service for the facility itself. We haven't quite nailed down how we're going to operate the service, but it is something that we're looking to implement in the near future. When we submitted the grant, we had initially estimated the timeframe of 2030 to have everything completed. I am already working on the development of the project itself. So I'm hopeful that we'll be able to deliver the project way sooner than that. But there are obviously various components that are, that you have to go through to make sure you're able to deliver a successful project. But I, I'm hopeful that we'll be able to deliver well in advance of 2030.
Thank you. And one last thing, can you just give us an update on the transportation center here in Calixco?
Sure, sure, absolutely. So the project, the Calixco Downtown, Calixco Intermodal Transportation Center, is actually out to bid right now. We actually had a pre-bid meeting this morning with several contractors to review the contract documents and the improvement plans, but also take a visit to the site itself. So we're hopeful that we'll be able to award a contract in the next couple of months, start construction near the beginning of the year. And we anticipate the project to take about a year to construct thereafter. So we're moving right along. We're excited about the project. We're excited about what it means for us from a transit perspective, but also excited at what it could do for the downtown area and the city of Calixco.
Thank you, David. Any other questions from my colleagues?
No.
If not, well, thank you.
Good job, good job, David.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we move on to public comments and public appearances. Public comments, not to exceed three minutes. This is the time for the public to address the city council in any item appearing on the printed agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. The mayor will recognize you and when you come to the microphone, please state your name and place of residence for the record. While members of the public are encouraged to participate, it is unlawful to disturb or delay the council meeting with personal or slanderous remarks. Group commentators may be requested to limit their group comments to 15 minutes. The city council is prohibited by state law from taking action or discussing items not included on the printed agenda. If the item you wish to comment on, it is not on the, if it is, you wish to comment on is on the public portion of the agenda, we will take your comments when we get to that item on the agenda. Please direct your questions and comments to the city council. Do we have any public comments?
Mr. Rocha?
Good evening, Mr. Rocha. I live here, I'm a resident of Calixco. Just wanted to remind the city council in your last meeting, you indicated you were going to be working on putting speed bumps around Cordova Park. If that can be placed on the agenda so we can make it happen, it's becoming a serious problem in that area. Just recently, we had a traffic collision there that involved a minor or was involved. If we can speed up the process and hopefully it will deter the kids who were taking on their cars and running at full speed and no one, no one controlling them, then maybe it can be, they can be slowed down minimum. And the other issue was, also was discussed at the previous meeting, was police department should be having more patrol units or patrolling that area for now because there's vandalism occurring. People entering the fields when even it's fenced. Someone's going to get hurt. And I think we don't want to wait for someone to get hurt. And my third issue is, you also mentioned, Mr. Legaspi, that you wanted to have community meetings regarding the $8.5 million heber, if it can be moved up as quickly as possible because we're potentially have the ability to lose that funding. The state is having financial problems and we made contact with the, with the sponsor of the bill and they said for now, we're kind of safe. But if things go more critical with the state of California, they're going to look at everything that is not being utilized.
There's going to be a report on that.
And hopefully we can have a community meeting, a town hall meeting where we can discuss also. We can have the participants or the people that are going to be impacted by the construction and they can be part of it. Let them be involved. The same thing goes for Cordova Park. It's, there's a lot of construction that was left untouched, piled. It looks like garbage, bottom line. If that can be taken care of as quickly as possible, let's, the kids are going to start using it soon. And there's not going to be, they're going to be fighting for places to play and to exercise. So it would really appreciate it if you can help us with that. Thank you, that was, that was it.
Thank you.
Jesús Solano?
Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. Jesús Solano, 426 Rosemont, Calixco. I will start that with the commissioners. Okay, I don't know how many board members get paid or how many commissioners get paid, but I believe that if there's commissioners that want to participate, or participants that want to become commissioners, they should come aboard without no pay. Volunteer at the time. That's one thing there, okay? And the other thing is, I don't agree, I know that what the city ordinance stipulates. So this council and part of the new council, when they come aboard, you need to take that into consideration. We cannot be meeting every two months. If we want to be more productive in Calixco, we need and we must meet every month. As it is right now, last week was our last meeting until apparently due to the city ordinance, we are not able to meet based on regulations, okay, until March. That is nonsense. However, I am letting this council know, we will meet in two months, okay? Even if we go against the city ordinance, we will meet. We'll bring it up to you guys later on, okay? The other thing is, when applicants participate or want to participate, they should be interviewed and asked, what is it that, why is it that they want to come aboard? What is it that they have to offer and are willing to give? The other thing is, I believe that based on the city ordinance, it's at the discretion of the council to appoint whoever they want. It's based on the regulation, I understand that. But however, I believe that the council should take into consideration that the commissioners that are operating right now, especially the bid commission and the community service commission, okay? We are operating properly and productively. So some of the commissioners that are willing to stay onboard should stay onboard because of the learning curve. If we start replacing commissioners just because a councilman comes in and they want to appoint someone different, you know, where is the stability? So we need to take a look at that there, right there. The other thing is, based on the stability, I talked on that. I also offered the productivity on the commissioners. And there's a lot that the bid and the community service commission can still offer, okay? So take that into consideration. Thank you.
Donald Medard Jr.?
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. My name is Donald Medard Jr. I'm a resident of the Fort Yuma Quetzal Indian Reservation near Winter Haven, California. I'm an elected official of the Quetzal tribe. I'm elected as a council member to represent just over 4,000 individual enrolled tribal members. I come here today to humbly ask that the city of Calixco formalize your support for the Quetzal National Monument. The Quetzal National Monument sets to protect 390,000 acres of federally held lands directly adjacent to our reservation to the north and to the west. Being your neighbors to the east here, I wanted to come out and unfortunately was not able to get on to today's agenda, but I wanted to make that ask. And so I would also like to offer that, you know, we would be willing to host you to come out if you want to learn more about our monument initiative. We would love to host you on our reservation and to really, you know, garner your support. We have the support of many other cities throughout the valley, but we need the support of the city of Calixco. We want to know that our neighbors are supportive and we want to know that, you know, you are behind us in our corner. We've made many, many visits to not only Sacramento. We had a recent victory with the passing of Senate Joint Resolution Number 16, which had unanimous support in the California State Legislature and provides support for not only the Quetzal National Monument, but the Chuck Walla National Monument Initiative. We have a letter of support from the governor of the state of California. As we, we've also, through grassroots efforts such as this, we've garnered over 30,000 individual signatures on an online petition from January until present. We have an ever-growing support book that includes many businesses throughout the valley, to include businesses here in Calixco. So your constituents are supporting this initiative and we would like that formal support from the city of Calixco itself. So like I said, you know, we would be more than happy to have you guys come out to the reservation. It's not that far of a drive and to come out and learn a little bit more about the ancestral lands that we intend to protect. I would like to point out that, you know, some of the relationship building that has gone on over this proclamation, or proclamation, presentation period, we've had meetings with many, many groups to include the off-road vehicle community, outdoor enthusiasts and even the mining companies here in Imperial Valley. And we've had very, very productive conversations just by sitting down and having open and honest conversations. And so we have, you know, many, many, like I said, many, many letters of support and we hope to garner yours. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you.
Oscar Pesqueira?
Hello, good evening, council, people, public. Just a quick, so my name is Oscar Pesqueira. She reads, I pay in Old Central. Just a quick update on the West Side Station Two from our end. We've seen a lot of good results now that we're back. Unfortunately, it's, when they call us, it's not a good thing, right? But we've been able to get there just a little quicker. The public has told us, thank God you're here quicker. So it's been working, it took a lot of work. From the past people that were here to the current and for those who are taking off pretty soon, we appreciate that. We're still two guys on the West Side. Population is still growing during the day at least. We still have two guys on that end. We're trying to work as hard as we can. As we can see, we have fire personnel doing double, triple duties. We have one here, sitting right here. At some point, we would like him back. To myself, engineer, to captain, we have firefighters, to engineers, to admin work. We really need the help in every which way that we can think of. We have a 2007 fire engine in the shop right now, 2007, with the rear end completely broken. That's going to cost you guys. At what point do we make hard decisions, unpopular ones sometimes, to be able to take care of this town? Some people are not going to like it. I don't like to pay more. But I live in Old Central. Look at the difference from the towns right now. We need to move forward. You people here now and for the ones who are coming in, our guys are getting way to the point where they're frustrated now. They were burned out, now you add the frustration. They can't focus that much anymore. We're trying to give them as much as we can for them to want to stay here to serve this city. We're trying to bring in more people. How? We need to make those hard and unpopular decisions. But there is a lot of progress. Guys do want to work, double the duties, triple the duties. But that time's running short. So we need the help from you and from the new ones. So thank you for your time and I wish you all good luck and good night.
Alejandra Guerrero?
Hola, mi nombre es Alejandra Guerrero. Vivo en la calle Clinton, 2312. No sé cómo presentarme, es la primera vez que estoy aquí. Este, yo estoy aquí más que nada representando a la mayoría de la gente que está en Victoria's. También estoy por el tema del Parque Córdoba. Yo tengo ahí residiendo, yo creo como unos ocho años. Tengo más o menos 200 firmas de la comunidad que estamos solicitando topes. Yo sé que hay personas de la comunidad que me decían que había mucho problema porque ya anteriormente habían solicitado los topes y se les negaron por la cuestión de reglas porque eran vialidades de salida. Pero yo tengo un niño pequeño y al momento de ver que está en peligro que mi hijo salió y que casi fue atropellado, no sé cómo solicitarlo, la verdad. Fui casa por casa preguntando y me enteré de muchísimas más cosas que ocupa la comunidad. Entonces más que nada vengo por la seguridad de mi familia y la seguridad de los niños que están alrededor del parque. Porque no nomás es el parque, si ustedes en alguna ocasión llegan a asistir por ahí, no hacen los saltos. La gente de ahí pasa acceso de velocidad. Tengo videos y pruebas que los puedo presentar y me gustaría que no quedara como un comentario sino como un tema para la próxima junta. Me inquieta mucho que hay más personas y no quieren, les da pena hablar, estar aquí al frente al público, pero yo sé que hay más personas que vienen también respecto a eso. Entonces, para mí es importante que lo tomen en cuenta y que se tome como un tema para la próxima sesión. Nosotros pagamos impuestos para ese parque. Son más de 230 casas que pagamos impuesto al año y no se va directamente a ese parque. También mi amiga Jolie Cunningham y su servidora, fuimos las personas que solicitamos firmas para que se hicieran esos juegos porque no había absolutamente nada ahí. Entonces ahora, yo sé que ustedes hicieron ese parque comunitario porque tenemos mucha gente. Yo sé que también hicieron los, las, ¿cómo se llama? Las canchas de béisbol. Cuando ese parque anterior, no sé si como 20 años que la gente compró esas casas, estaba otro proyecto, no para canchas de béisbol. Había, se suponía que había que haber canchas de básquetbol. Muchos de los habitantes que estamos alrededor, adolescentes, pues no tienen en qué hacer porque ya están grandes y no pueden estar en el parque. porque ya están grandes y no pueden estar en los juegos. Entonces necesitamos canchas de básquetbol o de tenis o de otras actividades que no sea nada más lo que es el béisbol. Entonces mis niños a veces no pueden jugar en el playground porque ya hay demasiada comunidad. Pusieron toda la gente a trabajar ahí en esas canchas. Ahorita, si ustedes ven, el sacate está totalmente seco y los árboles están secando en el área donde están los béisbol. Entonces a mí me preocupa porque asomas están ahí, o sea, se está secando. Gastaron en semilla para, yo sé que la mejor tal vez ya es tiempo de que termine, o que es el loidito. Okay, pues no me interesa, necesito decir todo lo que tengo porque la verdad para mí fue bien inquietante ver a mi hijo casi apachurrado. Me explico, ahorita hay una fuga de agua también en ese parque que no se ha tendido y también está, no nomás la fuga de agua, están cables salidos y no se atienden. Entonces también quitaron basureros donde la gente ponía todas las heces de los perros. Hay alrededor bastantes heces que las personas mayores están pisando. ¿Por qué? Porque no se atiende. Y yo solicité a la gente que está, que va a los jardineros, oigan, le dije, teníamos aquí, antes teníamos cestos de basura. La gente que va a jugar al béisbol dejan totalmente un montón de basura y la gente mayor que va en la mañana, ahí anda juntando la gente mayor la basura porque no se puede caminar ni tampoco ahí todas las heces de los perros. Entonces sí es importante que me lo tomen en cuenta, sorry por haberme pasado, pero sé que me gustaría que levanten la mano la gente que viene sobre lo del parque, sé que vienen otras personas más y que también están apoyando. Si quieren la próxima reunión, me traigo a las 100 personas, no creo que acaben todas, pero de verdad hagan algo, se los pido, por favor. Por favor, que no lo tomen, nomás como que mi comentario y va y cierran carpeta porque por eso estamos votando para la gente, para que nos apoyen. Okay, sorry, que sí me tardé.
Olga García.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Olga García, 2320, Yaquio Avenue. Me gustaría aprovechar esta oportunidad para hacer una petición. Ahorita que estamos hablando de los temas de los parques, yo vivo en la comunidad media cuadra de Parque Córdoba. Antes de la pandemia, se nos invitó a participar en la planeación de la otra mitad del parque Córdoba. En aquel entonces nos dimos la tarea varias personas de la comunidad y nos salimos a preguntar qué necesitaban ellos en ese parque, especialmente nuestros niños. Una de las solicitudes más inquietantes fue la construcción de una cancha de básquetbol. Les hago una pregunta, ¿cuántas canches de básquetbol hay en nuestra ciudad? Hay dos. Una está en la calle segunda y la otra a la de nuestra ciudad. ¿A cuántas millas de aquí está el parque Córdoba? Cerca de cinco, seis millas. Entonces ahora les pregunto, ¿dónde están jugando nuestros niños que les gusta este deporte? Yo les voy a decir dónde, en las calles, sí. Váyanse un fin de semana en las tardes a recorrer toda la comunidad. Están jugando en las calles. Entre ellos uno de mis hijos. Es verdad lo que eligieron de los topes. Nos pusieron unos departamentos, que lo respeto, pero salen a toda velocidad ahí donde juega mi niño. Compré yo una cancha de básquetbol y la puse afuera de mi casa. No saben cuántos niños acercaron a pedirme permiso si podían jugar en ella. Y claro que les dije que sí, pero me da tristeza que yo cuando salgo, los niños están jugando afuera de mi casa, sí. Pasen, la cancha está rota, no me importa comprar otra, pero no es justo que nosotros teniendo un parque a media cuadra de mi casa, mi niño esté jugando afuera. Se oscurece, saca la lámpara del carro de su papá y pone luz para sus compañeritos y para ellos. Díganme, yo no les vengo a reclamar nada, como trabajamos juntos, pero sí me da tristeza que aportamos a ese parque, sí. Entonces, por eso les pido, lo que practicaba con otros papás, apoyamos a los equipos de béisbol, pero ¿cuántos niños hace falta para jugar béisbol? Mínimo siete, ocho, nueve. Solamente falta un niño y una pelota para que vote la pelota en una cancha de básquetbol. Y ahí creamos comunidad. Los niños se acercan, es como yo les digo, mi niño sale afuera y salen otros niños. Yo salgo de mi casa y hay otros niños y hasta les ofrezco agua, pero no se vale. No se vale que nuestros niños jueguen en las calles. Por eso les pido que escuchen a nuestra comunidad y que trabajemos juntos para ser más equitativos. Ayúdenos a ofrecer a nuestros niños un lugar seguro donde puedan jugar y construir una verdadera comunidad. Nuestros niños merecen más seguridad. Muchas gracias.
Arturo Medina.
Buenas noches, buenas noches al concilio y al público también que nos escucha. Mi nombre es Arturo Medina, residente de aquí de Callexico y voy a agregar mis comentarios a los comentarios que han hecho las personas que me antecedieron de la necesidad de proveer lugares para nuestros jóvenes, principalmente en ese lugar, el Parque Córdoba. Pero también quiero recordarles a todos ustedes, este, principalmente que yo ya llevo 14 años pidiendo un alto ahí en la esquina de la Nixon y la Meros. Precisamente porque las personas, les voy a clarificar, el alto no es para mí, yo sé manejar muy bien, este, pero es para las personas que no tienen consideración de los demás y viajan a unas velocidades increíbles. Entonces es una de las situaciones que quería recordarles. El otro día me dio mucho gusto escuchar que tienen un proyecto ya para renovar el camino Jasper, perdón, el camino Powker y creo que también Jasper, vi la presentación que hicieron aquí el otro día y me dio mucho gusto, pero eso no quiere decir que se necesita, se necesita este, tapar todos los baches que hay. Acabo de ir a el centro, con eso de las cinco de la tarde hoy y tuve que viajar cuidadosamente porque hay mucho tráfico y este, y no se ven los baches y ahorita entre, ¿qué sería? Code y Jasper. Hay como tres o cuatro baches muy peligrosos y no puedo irnos a sacarle la vuelta absolutamente. Entonces es una de las cosas que quiero recordarle. El día de ayer miré este, unos, dos personas que iban manejando sus bicicletas y una off-road ahí en el Lote Valdió de Code y Clinton. Es un polvadero increíble, vivimos en una comunidad súper contaminada y eso se necesita atender. Entonces son varias cosas que quería recordarles que necesitamos atender, las necesidades de esta comunidad. Muchas gracias.
Now we move on to the city manager's report. Council, public, first of all, I would like to mention that Fire Station Two is open and how Mr. Pesqueira mentioned that seems like the community on that side of town, it's something, kind of, one, but the call volumes have increased dramatically for Fire Station Number Two. When before, we used to run two to three calls maybe a day, these guys are five, six, they're just out and about and it's all on the west side of town. So it's like, it's like the community knows that the guys are there, so let's call 911 and they're getting to work. Unfortunately, there's only two guys there, but, or three at some times, but Station Two is open. Thank you to the council, thank you to previous administration for allowing us to rehab the building. The guys are there and will continue to push forward. There might be a soft opening December 6th. It's a Friday, it gives us time for, I know there's still some equipment that the station is getting, the washer and dryer that we had purchased, some lockers that we have purchased, some furnishing that the guys have purchased as well on their own and just getting it up to par. But I want to give a quick update on the fire station. I want to thank David Aguirre for giving that presentation and again thank him for what he's done for the city in providing 250,000 for the traffic controller and the new traffic study. As far as Córdoba Park, I have reached out to Ms. Falomir and to Mr. Carlos Beltrán to get an update on the situation, right? Because how Mr. Rocha mentioned, there's a pile of dirt on one side, they were supposed to do some landscaping work and see where we're at with that. We did have a department head meeting last week and I would believe it was brought up about the speed bumps, right? And not only doing the speed bumps, but a speed hump, which is kind of not like the ones in Denny's, because you can see, you know, all the damage that's done to the vehicles, but it's more of a smoother transition. I mean, Mr. Orozco and Ms. Falomir had brought those ideas up to do around the park, not only Córdoba, Jefferson had been brought into consideration, C.M. Perry, but Mr. Orozco had mentioned putting stop signs at C.M. Perry to maybe, you know, hold up the flow of traffic, adding a stop sign or more markings here on Sherman and Heber, just because if it's an offset of a street, there is some accidents that have happened there. But we are talking about the speed humps and the concerns of the community. We have heard them, I listened to them up here and we have discussed these in department head. So just moving forward with them and see how we can maybe get more information. I know the holidays are coming, I don't want to make any excuses, but maybe we can bring back December, June 4th or following meeting to see where we're at and what the cost would be to actually install these speed humps and not bumps. We're still continuing to work with business license and impact fees task force, the guys are still going out there collecting. Again, we keep hitting this list so we can collect these much needed revenues, right? We also have opened some discussions about how to make the business license process more friendlier, more faster, expedite the process and get more businesses coming in because we have been getting a lot of emails about potential business coming in. We are moving forward with the planning, I mean, Finance Director, contract went out this week and hopefully we can get her home board here quick. I have reached out to SoCal Gas and Mr. Legazpi, we will be having that meeting with them here. We just coordinate on our timing so we can look at those impact fees as well. We did talk about with Chief Orozco, La Jolla Palms, right? There's an area brush in La Jolla Palms that has an encampment. You can't see it because it's all in between the trees and it's a pretty big encampment. So the issue that we've had with them is, we did, I did sign the contract with Fire Prevention Services a few months back, is getting a hold of the property owner, right? They're non-existent no more. So now what we can do is send code enforcement, send hopefully with PD to help us, you know, start the process of starting to clean up that area. I have reached out to one of the parcel realtors, I believe Mr. Orozco, he did provide me a number, which they're even willing to kind of hand over the property to the city. So reached out to them earlier today. We're gonna get a meeting going with their legal, our legal to see, hey, why not? That's additional revenue that we can, if that does happen. I talked to Carlos about it earlier so we can get this process going and probably bring in potential money that is much needed. We also had also talked to Ms. Falomir, the county. I know there was a big concern of getting Cole and Jasper paved, right? But what about the section between 111 and Jasper? I know we've talked about getting weekly done, getting that street finally done, but we need to look into some revenues or grants or whatnot so we can do the furniture road of Denny's all the way down to 111, right? Because those are all the businesses that are at. And why not move on that? I would like to thank Finance, HR for bringing back Ms. Rosalba. She's a lady that had been working on grants with previous administration to try to free up these monies that are stuck. So she has been back maybe a week now and she's doing a great job. She has a lot of work. I actually was able to finally sit down and talk to her and figure out what was actually going on and this goes back all the way to 2006. So there is some money there that we can free up to hopefully look into some of these projects, not only the Skoroni project, but the Heber Expansion Project, other things that we can free up to finally apply for more grants so we can get all these projects up and running. Mr. Ojino Ramos, I'm sorry if I pronounced his last name wrong, he's on the school board with the parents regarding General Dollar Tree. I think there's been a lot of complaints that a lot of the kids from Aurora go behind General Dollar into the bushes and, you know, just hang out or whatnot or not go to school. I did send code enforcement there a couple of weeks ago and actually he did pull out a couple of kids from the bushes and say, who are you? I'm the code enforcement, he showed him his badge and we went back to school. But General Dollar is very cooperative and they already sent a team down to start cleaning that whole area up and not make that little area hazard. The Finance Director and Ms. Falomir, and I apologize for not being there because I was double booked on a meeting, but they did meet with Gov Deal, Surplus Auctions so we can start adding those tent trailers that we have, the shower trailer that we have, all the surplus electronic equipment that's sitting in City Hall, the library, every other department that we can start selling all these things off in auction. Apparently there is no charge from this company. They do municipalities in other cities and we're able to get rid of all this surplus stuff that is just sitting around the city. And I think they're gonna start a training here in the near future to get some direction on how to upload equipment or trailers and so on to the website so we can get that going. So talking about Ms. Rosalba and the grants, I did reach out to Felicity from CDBG that's willing to send a team down to help Ms. Rosalba with these grants and they're gonna come from Sacramento, San Diego, sit down with her and see where we're at. They have reached out to Shannon Burge, she's a specialist for the Imperial County that's gonna help us out and they're like, thank you for bringing her on, we're ready to work. So that's coming in the near future. What else? I want to thank all the staff members, Norma and her staff for putting the event last week. It was, it was really nice to see all the community come out, you know, middle of the month, but they came out in herds, but it was a great event. Her staff did a wonderful job. Ms. Falomir, Public Works, they were from sunup to sundown, they stayed behind, cleaned up everything and they did also an awesome job. Now, thanks Andy for helping out with, you know, any financials or whatnot. Ms. Lisette, because apparently she was offended that Camilo didn't give any kudos to her, but she was there out there. I want to thank Ms. Blanca Morales, she had a group out there with her people out there. Ms. Ureño was there, from the commissions, few of the commissioners were there and it was great to see all these people out, you know? Maybe next year we can do a little, you know, closer to, but I think that's it.
Chamber of Commerce.
Oh, Chamber of Commerce, gentlemen, apologize, save the best for last.
Of course.
Good save.
I have, I did talk to Risk Management about the MOU, we can change some bervage. I did talk to Carlos about getting that moved forward, that way we can finally get you guys in the building and so we can start advertising the chamber at City Hall to get these businesses going. Carlos has already given direction, Ms. Denise has been doing a great job in helping me do that, so hopefully we can, we can see this here in the next meeting and get this approved. Anything else for that? Oh, and I do want to mention as well, I know it was thrown out, I want to thank the City Clerk's Office for doing a great job and bringing on this. Oh, and, and I do wanna mention as well, I know it was thrown out, I wanna thank the, the City Clerk's Office for doing a great job and, and bringing on this, um, Civics Plus, um, software program. They have been doing a couple of trainings. And, um, I was talking to, um, to Lisa about this earlier, about making everything electronically. Um, so the new council would have tablets in front of them. Uh, we do wanna update the facilities here and make it more modernized. So anything that is voted on or, or, um, any discussion on that, you're gonna see on monitors and you can actually see the actual vote take place. Um, so I wanna thank, um, the City Clerk's Office for doing a great job and doing that training and transitioning over to, um, to that system. Um, there was a comment made, I think, uh, last meeting about, uh, the City Clerk's, um, contract. It's not expired. Uh, she was, um, her contract started October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three for three years. So she still has a few more years to go and I just wanted to, you know, and, and she's doing the best that she has. And that's what she has there. And, and we're doing the best that we have, cause this is all we have here, you know? And, and, um, moving forward and I'm doing the best I can with their help. And I couldn't thank them, um, you know? And that's it.
Thank, thank you. Thank you chief for such a comprehensive report. Appreciate that. Alright, so you don't have a lot to do, but we're gonna add more things.
You're not used to that, huh?
So now with that, we move, thank you. Thank you for coming. Uh, now we move on to the commissioners' report. Do we have any commissioners? Mr. Horton?
Ladies first.
Oh, okay.
You wanna go first, Mr. Horton? Okay, I might be here for about an hour. So, so just relax. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of the Council, City Manager and our esteemed City Clerk's Office and members of the public. Patricia Ureña, Chair of the Community Services Commission, just wanted to give you some updates regarding our meeting last week. And I'll start off with Rodriguez Park. We did, um, bring that to the table to talk about the thirty-five thousand dollars that was allocated from the Imperial Irrigation District for trees. So I know that, uh, Ms. Falomir is, uh, has contacted an arborist to come up with a plan as to where we're gonna be planting those trees for better shading along with the irrigation. So we have about thirty-five thousand dollars to expend for that project at Rodriguez. We're also, uh, still working on getting the snack bar redone. The, the entire, uh, facility really needs to be completely made and redone. And hopefully we can get the, uh, the union from the, uh, the wood people to come and do the, the roofing on that. Uh, the big topic here has been the expansion, uh, the Heber Expansion Project. Uh, we did, um, meet on that as well. Regarding the Heber Expansion, just so that everyone understands, that that grant was submitted by, uh, Ms. Falomir back in two thousand and eighteen. And the state of California, uh, awarded the city an eight point five million dollar grant, which was a competitive grant through Proposition sixty-eight. With that being said, you know, when you, um, when you do this competitive type grant, it's really difficult to do, you know, uh, redesign the scope of work and even the location. So with that, I, uh, I went ahead and had a, a conversation with the Deputy Director from the State of California Local Grants and Services to ask if he could come down along with his, uh, chief operator from the grants system to come and meet with Callexico regarding how we can start the project with what we have right now. Seven hundred and forty-one thousand have been expended as of, as of now for architectural design. So there's some funding that has already been expended. And for people that, um, are, have been asking about where's the money for, you know, the eight point five million, well, the state works on a reimbursement. Basically you do the job and then they reimburse you, uh, on, on the work that you do. So because this is a competitive grant, you know, one of the things that they don't wanna do is, is hurt the integrity of the grant, which is you, you don't wanna do that because other cities also competed for it. So we're hoping that we have a meeting with the Deputy Director mid-December. He was actually down here about four weeks ago. Um, we would've known, I, I would've invited him to come and do a, um, a site visit of the location. One of the things we've talked about is, you know, we have eight point five million. We need to start the project. On, I wanna say in August, this council decided to just go with the building for now and continue to look for funding as we build the, the gymnasium. You already heard, uh, parents talking about kids not having anywhere to go for basketball. And this is one of the reasons we do need to build a gym. And I did talk to him, uh, the state, I talked to the state about the dire need to have a gymnasium in our city. It would also give us some pride that we finally have something for ourselves. So, um, with the Heber Expansion, we're, we are moving forward with it, but we're going to see if there's any additional funding that we can get from maybe the state. And also I think we're right now waiting, uh, we're on, I don't know if we're on hold, but we were, uh, we did request funding from Congressman Reese's office. And I wanna say it was about a half a million that, that they would be allocating to this project, but that's on hold as well. Um, so with that, we also talked about the twenty, uh, the budget. And one of the things that I saw that was deferred was the strategic plan for parks and recreation. One of the things that people here need to know that in order to finish and complete a project, you have to have some kind of a strategic plan. What park are we gonna work on first to get it completed? What's the projected cost so that we can move forward with those projects? Without a park and recreation plan, we're kinda just piecemealing all these parks and we're not completing them. So, uh, this commission has worked really hard to try to figure out which one is most important. We see Cordova, we see Heber, we see Rodriguez and Legion Field as our, our big parks in Callexico. We also, uh, wanna thank the staff for putting on a, uh, a tree lighting in November, which was, uh, well attended. And, um, you know, had the opportunity to go out there and, and see everybody have a good time with this. It was a kinda like a quick turnaround, but thank you to the staff for putting this on. I wanna also mention that we voted on the mural project. Um, I wanna say it's cycle number eight. We only, uh, accepted one drawing, which is gonna be placed at the library. We weren't, we did not accept the other two because we were concerned about the artwork on there. One of the things that this commission is working on is trying to put a policy together along with the presentation to the council that we'd like to see more murals that deliver a story about Callexico. Historically, we don't have murals that tell the story of who we are, where we came from. And that's one of the projects we'd like to see and maybe also work with San Diego State University and, uh, have them, um, help us with a grant writer to find a grant in the arts. So there's a lot of work that needs to be done, continues to be done, and we look forward to continuing to do that. I do wanna take the opportunity to, to thank the commission, uh, for, uh, continuing to do the work on the ad hoc committees. They report back to, uh, the chair. The chair, uh, on the other side writes all the agenda items for the, for the recreation department and for the parks. So we have a pretty thick, uh, agenda. We try to get out of there early, but everybody has things that they want done in Callexico. And I see the frustration about the speed bumps at Cordova. I live on Topaz and Sapphire. You think you have speed bumps. We need, we need some help there. We have people driving those vehicles at close to sixty miles an hour. Uh, I've seen a lot of dead cats on the road, but, um, I've been, um, close to having a collision turning, uh, on my street when cars wanna pass me on the left-hand side. So there is a need to maybe find out who these, uh, rough riders are. It's a lot of young, uh, kids riding those speed cars. And I'm telling you, they are going fast on, on, on Sapphire and you do have the rise and retention basin located in that area. So there is a need to do a, uh, a study on some of these fast riding areas or, or, uh, streets. That's very important. Uh, there's a lot of other things that we discuss regarding ARPA funds that need to be completed. The removal of the fence at Crummet Park, we discussed that. And we also are discussing the Community Services Commission bylaws. Uh, one of the things that, um, because we're a culmination of many different projects here. We have parks, recreation, senior programs, cultural arts, beautification, and I'm probably missing another one. So that's why we developed the ad hocks to have everyone, you know, work in their forte. So, um, it's important that, that, um, as we move forward, that we continue to provide commissioners and, and uh, that wanna serve the entire community so that they can facilitate and be the ears and the eyes for the city council. Our job is to advocate for the department, but it's also our job to advocate for the city council so that we can make good recommendations to you. So when you make those decisions. Um, with that, I'm gonna go ahead and close by saying that I'm very proud of the commission that I've worked with and for the past year and a half, or almost two years. And, um, I think we're, we, we're on a roll and, uh, look forward to working with them again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, uh, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ben Horton. I'm, uh, Economic Development Financial Advisory. And first, all I wanna say is a pleasure to be your commissioner. Nothing gives me more pleasure than to serve the city of Callexico. One of the things I wanna point out is that, uh, hopefully this Tuesday, thanks to Mr. Legaspi, the following Tuesday, we're gonna have a meeting with T-Mobile Foundation to start looking at what grants we need in the city of Callexico. And if we can make, move that forward, we will see some, some better activities. I was impressed by what they have done for one community to revamp their community center. I thought it was a great idea and it's something that we can look at to move forward, move and adjust. The other thing that I wanna bring up, I have had several citizens from Callexico question, why don't we sell tickets to, for the buses? The I, I, ITC TC for, to, uh, all the other city halls sell the tickets. And I think it's only up to the city manager. I don't think the city council. Okay, I got the word from the man. We're working on the project, so moving forward, thanks to him. And so that kinda killed my thunder there. But, uh, one thing is that I'm looking forward to working on this, uh, grant deal cause we can do several different grants through T-Mobile Foundation. That's where the grants are coming from. And if we could pull this off, it's gonna revitalize the city to a certain degree. And we'll see what we can do, how we can move forward and adjust to a better life for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Horton. Anybody else from, uh, commission?
Good evening, City Council Members and Mayor Garcia and everyone who's attending our meeting today here in, uh, the public. I am Blanca Morales. I am the bid commissioner, the chair bid commissioner. And, um, about a month ago, I believe, we had a meeting here with, uh, Attorney Marcus regarding the downtown issues on safety, regarding homeless. And, um, so I met with District Attorney Marcus to go over the PERC program, which is P E R T, stands for Psychiatry Emergency Response Team. So every, all the counties, San Diego, all the other big cities have them except for Imperial County. We were able to get a meeting with, um, the San Diego PERC team this week. Uh, Mr. Legaspi attended. Um, I believe Mr. Orozco wasn't there, but we had another police officer, Sean Acuna. And Contreras, we missed you. I don't think you got the invite, but it was a very, very productive, good meeting. They've established that PERC team since nineteen ninety-seven. Um, they gave us a lot of highlights on how they're working their PERC team. And, uh, District, uh, Marcus, um, uh, Attorney Marcus is going to meet with the county behavioral health, the county employees, because it's behavioral health, and it's also the police officers and clinicians. So it's a, a team of people that are going to be able to get trained and do ride-alongs with the clinicians and the police officers in regards to the people that are out in our community that are having behavioral health issues that we may not know about when they're actually stopping people or homeless people that we may not know how to approach this schizophrenia. That's just one example. And, uh, so that was a, a very productive meeting that we had this week. So we're gonna continue to work with, um, District Attorney Marcus and behavioral health and the county to be able to create a PERC team here for Imperial County. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from commission? That, we move on to, uh, City Council, uh, comments and reports of minutes attended.
Good evening, Members of the public. Just constantly working with city staff to address, um, i- items for the public and, um, some items that'll be coming before, um, the council, hopefully on the next agenda for, um, ideas and discussion action in regards to, um, changing some policies for certain ordinances and, um, maybe finding ways to incentivize economic development for the city. Thank you.
Uh, briefly, um, yes, I'd like to thank the, uh, Callexico staff, Mr. Contreras for pulling, pulling out that, uh, event, uh, the Christmas tree lighting. It was a pleasure to be in there as always. I, it's just about the first time I've been there, but I think last time, from last time, we probably doubled the occupancy there at that time. That's pretty lighting, pretty good that the community went out there. Uh, obviously I did some talking around that, uh, very, very good project. So I appreciate that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, uh, I'd like to thank, um, the city staff for putting up the Christmas lighting. It was, uh, it was exciting. We had our mayor emceeing the whole night. So, uh, it was, it was an exciting event. There was a lot of, uh, kids in attendance. And thank you, uh, Norma and, uh, volunteer groups and city of, uh, Callexico staff members for, uh, doing an outstanding job. Also, like, uh, Blanca Morales had mentioned, um, I participated. Thank you, Blanca, for inviting me, uh, to the, uh, San Diego, the Imperial Valley Behavioral Health, uh, training, uh, what they had to offer and how things are working in San Diego and how we can bring that to, uh, Callexico. It's very, uh, very important to have that PERC team. I know, um, uh, you have that clinician working with a police officer hand in hand and they're the ones that are responding to these fifty-one fifty calls instead of, um, you know, uh, having, uh, other officers respond. It would be that one general officer with that PERC team personnel responding to these calls. So thank you, Blanca, for bringing that up. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just want, eh, to thank the city of Callexico staff for responding to all the requests for support that I just get, eh, for, from some citizen, eh, who requests my support. Algo que me han pedido mucho, Señor Contreras, son los niños que van a la escuela, no están pintadas bien las líneas para pasar los carros. Esto se ha pedido por muchos años y la verdad, eh, yo creo que no ha habido dinero para, para pintar esas rayas, esas líneas. Y la segunda que me llamó la atención fue las banquetas. Hay gente y niños que se han caído. Tenemos dos escuelas, si mal no recuerdo, en, en la ciudad de Callexico. Todas son iguales de importante, incluyendo las privadas, sobre todo las del Distrito Escorial son bastantes, ¿verdad? Y hay mucho problema en eso. Eh, recuerdo que cuando estuve en la, en, en la Callexico, you know, face school district, pusieron esos topes que ustedes están pidiendo. Por un tiempo inclusive tenía lucecitas y toda la cosa. Pero ya no, nunca más, se volvieron a ver. Y la verdad sí me preocupa de, tengo bastantes solicitudes para que podamos apoyar a las escuelas. A lo mejor poniéndonos de acuerdo, ¿no?, con, con ellos, pero sí necesitamos, eh, darle ese servicio. Y por supuesto, eh, a los altos que están pidiendo, a los parques que están pidiendo y todo, vamos a tener, me lo prometo usted, una, la próxima junta, una reunión para que se pueda informar a todos y que la nueva mesa directiva que va a entrar con el favor de Dios pueda tener toda esta información al, al día, ¿no?, por supuesto. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So, and I just wanna echo what has been said. Um, thank you to the staff for putting, uh, that really wonderful celebration, the Christmas tree lighting. Thank you to the sponsors also. Without the sponsors, you know, also that probably wouldn't have taken place. And I wanna thank all the staff without really taking the chance to, maybe omitting some names, right? Lisette, I know that you got a mic case, uh, but everyone that really, uh, put that together. So, uh, again, without you also, we wouldn't have those events. Uh, but even before, you know, the Christmas tree lighting, we also, uh, participated in, um, in the, the Veterans Day, uh, celebration. Every member's, you know, both at the cemetery and then also here at the, uh, Veterans Monument, you know, which, um, I was glad to see that, that, that was, uh, something that was brought back from, uh, years ago. We hadn't had a gathering there. I think it was more of a celebration, a remembrance and gathering of our community, community members. And also that was put together by the citizens that really are involved, you know. Mujeres with Boys had a really, you know, instrumental participation there. But it was done by everyone. So the Bahadur's also, they put on a really good event, you know, every, every time that we need to remember our, you know, Mr. Romero's back there. So every time we need to remember, you know, our veterans. So I do thank you for that, you know, the staff and the community that comes out because we need to come out and support those efforts and those, you know, celebrations. Also, as you saw, I just wanted to highlight again, participating in, excuse me, not just meetings, but partnerships that we have with agencies that are either within the county, with other cities, is really instrumental. It's really key. You saw how ICTC, you know, today, the director came out and provided that report, that presentation on some of the work that has been done around our community. Keep an eye on that because they're going to continue to help. They're looking at, you know, our bridges also, how we can collaborate, you know, through joint grant, you know, opportunities that we can go into, mobility. So it's really important that we continue to be there, we continue to be engaged and just continue to be good partners. So I know that some of us will be transitioning into civilian life, but the work will continue. And that's one of the things that I will suggest that, you know, those relationships stay on, continue to happen because that's the way that also you're going to continue, we're going to continue to move ahead. So with that, I'll move to the next item, which is consent agenda.
We have a comment from an item in consent agenda.
Okay.
Jonathan, Jonathan Rangel?
Yes.
Good evening, council, city manager, public. My name is Jonathan. I head with the Calixico Police Officers Association. While I appreciate the intention behind this initiative to recognize and reward employees with bilingual skills, there are several concerns that need to be addressed. First and foremost, we must consider the adequacy of this stipend. Language proficiency, especially in professional setting, is a skill that requires time, education, and continuous practice. Offering $20 per pay period undervalues the immense contribution that bilingual employees make. These individuals are often served as vital links in communication, enhancing workplace efficiency and reducing misunderstandings. A stipend of this magnitude does not reflect the significant role they play. Second, we need to think about equity and implementation. If this stipend is based solely on claiming bilingual status without proper assessment or demonstrated workplace use, it risks being unfair and inconsistent. Lastly, there's a question of prioritization, excuse me, prioritization, see? My first language was Spanish, as you can tell. If the organization seeks to reward bilingual proficiency, we should explore a more meaningful approach, whether through higher compensation, professional development opportunities, or structured roles that fully leverage and reward this skill. In conclusion, while recognizing bilingual employees is a step in the right direction, the proposed $20 stipend fails to meaningfully acknowledge their contributions. I urge you to reconsider this proposal and work towards a solution that generally reflects the value of bilingualism in our workplace. Plain and simply, ladies and gentlemen, our Spanish skills are an asset, and at $20, the city is showing how undervalued they feel that skill is. The amount of Spanish that us as officers use in the field is about 90%. Not just that, we speak, we translate, and we have to write our reports in English. So I'm not trying to put us at a different pedestal or a different higher rate than any other staff member, but we should match ourselves with our counterparts. That's a negotiation factor. But table it for now. Let's talk on it. Let's have all stakeholders involved. I don't believe anybody reached out to the POA to see how much Spanish we use. Once again, we use it a lot, a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have a comment on any items on that consent agenda?
I totally disagree with this gentleman. That is the norm throughout the state. That's what you get paid, or bilingual pay, because your salary is already including it. That's when you normally, when you hire someone, you put those requirements. You're just putting to those that get certified. Not just because you speak Spanish doesn't qualify you to get the $20. You need to be certified. That's what the county pays. And it's the normal process. So you're just adding more expenses to the city.
Anybody else?
Good council. I do agree that our fire department and our police department should get paid top dollar. They do a great job. We need more of them. However, being bilingual in Calixico is the norm. Everybody, people speaks 95% Spanish here. I bet you all policemen speak Spanish. That is, should not be incentive. But the other thing, we don't have money, like you said. We cannot even keep up with the 5% pay increase that they need per year. So that'll be nice, but otherwise, we'll be better. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could just ask you for your slip so we can put it on the record, as your comments?
Pardon me?
You could just submit a comment slip?
Oh, yes.
So we can have it on the record. Please, thank you. Thank you. Anybody else have a comment on consent? With that, I believe I had a motion. Someone made a motion for approval?
One second.
So comments before, versus second?
I think that we should, in this case, for number, what is nine? I wasn't here for any of the meetings, so I don't feel comfortable approving. Well, I wasn't here for the first three, sorry. Let me rephrase that, and the last one, only for one of them. So could we separate that for a vote separately, not under consent, so I could vote for the minutes that I was here for? And then I do think that we should remove item 11 from consent and have a separate discussion and action for it.
Okay, so now we have a first and second, so we have to take a vote, right?
Yeah.
Or do we just go ahead and remove that item at this point?
Yeah, we have a first and second, but the people making the first and second are comfortable with amending that to... We would just be, we would be pulling number 11 for separate discussion and vote, but approving the remainder of the consent with the notation that the council member will be abstaining from item number nine. If the first and second want to amend their motions, state that.
So the motion or the amended motion, if you choose the ones that did the first and second, to pull item number 11 and then also to number nine, to note that someone will be abstaining?
And that would just be part of the record. So, yeah, just more, it's more just a pulling 11 item for separate discussion and vote.
Correct.
So the motion would be approving items number nine and 10, and then 11 will hear separately?
Nine and 10.
Could you repeat the motion?
So we're pulling item number 11 and then item number nine. Just make a note that Councilmember Thailand, that will be abstaining because she wasn't here, so she's not comfortable voting on that. So that will be the motion.
I have just a quick question. Mayor, Mr. Attorney, since the item on number 11, it's just a...
It's an action item.
It's an action, okay. Abducting a resolution is still an action item?
Yeah, correct. Yeah, I mean, yeah. So right now, the motion is to pull it for separate discussion and vote 11. And then for the record, we'll, council member will be abstaining from the approval of the minutes, except with July 22nd.
So my question, Mr. Attorney, is if it was an action item, how come it wasn't put into discussion, action, potential action? That's just my question.
Items can go on either or. Yeah, it just, correct, yeah.
I would like to take the opportunity to correct the city attorney. You have a motion, you have a second. You need to add on your motion separately.
And that was my next question, is I made the second before she brought that up. So that's why we need to vote on it. That was the other question.
Well, if that's, if you're comfortable with the people making the first and second, you'd be comfortable with amending your motion as such.
So, right, so we voted on it, and if you want to bring it back, that item, we can vote again, right? Or no, because it'd be already voted on?
Yeah, you have a first and second, so you have the floor. So right now, if you're comfortable with your amending your motion to pull number 11 out for separate vote.
So 11 will be added today or?
We'll just, we would just hear that after this motion. It was to be heard tonight. It's just beginning to be heard on its own. Normally consent items, you vote them all at the same time, right? What's being requested, to amend the motion to then vote on 11 by itself after the voting for the other consent items.
Yeah, my, the question that I have is, it was second, it was second by me without any further amendments or discussion, I think, and we need to go through that first. That's my question. That's the only question I have.
Yeah, if you don't want to, then that's, yeah, you would vote on. Correct. If you don't, if you... Yeah, then the only thing you could do now is do, somebody could do a substitute motion, which would be a first and a second, and that would replace that first motion. That would be the other option. If the people on the floor did not want to amend the motion that's on the floor, what you could do is somebody could propose a substitute motion, which would be to approve items nine and 10, hold separate discussion on 11, and we would need a second for that motion.
Okay, and if it's a subsequent motion, does that have to be a vote on?
Correct. Yeah, you'd have a, somebody had to make a substitute motion, motion, somebody had to second it, you'd vote on it, and then that becomes, this is a Robert Charles of orders. I mean, that's, if you want to, I mean, that's the procedure. If you don't want to amend your, if you don't want to amend the ordinance on the floor, then the only way another motion can supersede that is if somebody made a substitute motion, which you need to, you know, somebody would make it, it'd be seconded, it'd be voted upon, and then that motion then gets heard now, so. That's Robert Charles of order.
To just make sure that we clear this up, to pull item 11...
The thing is, we do have a first and a second on the floor. That's who we're talking about. So if we have a first and a second, we think we need to amend their motion.
Okay, so let's go ahead and vote on that as it was stated, unless you...
Well, but my point of, my point of order was initially, we made a second, we should have voted on.
Okay, so let's go ahead and...
That was my point of order, right? Which goes with procedural.
Yes.
Independently, whatever was brought up after that.
So let's go ahead and vote on.
The motion on the floor is to approve the entire, approve the consent calendar as presented, which is items nine, 10, and 11. Correct. Obviously, and we'll note on the record of the abstentions of the council member.
Mayor Camilo Garcia?
No.
Mayor Pro, Mayor Protem Javier Moreno?
Yes.
Councilmember Gloria Romo?
Yes.
Councilmember Victor Legasi?
Yes.
Councilmember Lisette Alinda?
No.
Motion passes.
So now we move on to discussion and potential action items. At number 12, 2023, 2024 year end and 2024, 2025 first quarter budget set of report and resolution to amend that 2023, 2024 and 2024, 2025 budgets, staff report on that quarter report.
We have public comments?
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and people in the audience. Today, we're presenting the first quarter budget report and the first quarter and also the status of the 2324 budget. Today's objective presentation is to provide an update on 2023, 24 year end status and also 2425 three-month expenditure status to bring a policy direction on year-end surplus and provide recommendation to consider a resolution to amend 2023, 24, and 2425 budgets address water, wastewater, and airport operating deficits that we will be presenting to you in December or January. Second, and the second, second next step would be the second quarter report that we are planning to present mid-January, beginning of February. The 2324 General Fund year-end results has ended the year achieving its revenue target by $258,000 and with overall expenditure savings of $705,000. The General Fund has also benefited by saving, savings in its self-insured medical program that have been rebated to participating funds in the amount of $378,000. $441,000 on fund balance is being recommended to be retained and fund to achieve our 68 days reserve target. In total, there's $900 total general fund surplus and excess of reserve available for your recommendations. The fund balance amendment continues with city's past practice to allocate general fund surplus funds in support of three financial policy objectives. Builds reserves, $441,000 towards reserve, which will put the city's operations to 68 days at June 2025. This 68-day reserve target established in the annual budget adoption resolution, which includes 60 days to cover the fund's cash flow requirements from July through the first property tax remittance in December. An additional eight days to provide an emergency reserve of 10% of sales tax revenue to raise for unexpected natural or economic impacts to the city. Invest and program, $140,000 to the airport. The airport fund closed the 2324 year with a fund balance deficit that is not expected to be able to be cleared through ongoing operations. General fund transfer is proposed to backfill the deficit. And as I mentioned in the beginning, that's the next step we will be having in December, January to bring an operational recommendations for you for the airport. $760,000 to local capital improvement. A portion of this funds are proposed for allocation in the 2425 first quarter budget resolution, and a portion is proposed to carry over in the next year's 2526 budget cycle or with your recommendation to use it on the second quarter report. Pay down debt, as you are very well aware, we did open an OPEP trust fund. We are recommending to invest $75,000 contribution to the city's OPEP trust fund for the retiree medical benefits and $75,000 towards employee compensated absence fund with a total to pay down debt of $150,000. The 2425 citywide expenditures, all funds are within their expected expenditure trend. Outside of the general fund, the most significant expenditures are 2.9 million of spending in the new year capital grant project. All general fund departments are at or near the 25% target three-month expenditure trend as of September 2024. The city has also made its vacancy savings assumption during this period. The total general fund expenditure are 22% of the annual budget. I do need to bring point here that we are using the vacancy savings to make up for these expenditures, and I also would like to thank the departments because they are very aware of their situation for the city, and they have been very conservative to their purchases. City council has implemented two policy directives since the 2024-25 budget was adopted that prompted revenue budget revision. $164,982 in revenue loss in the police and administration departments. The Hertzstone CFD public safety reimbursement implemented in 2005 was waived from the annual property owner levy for 2425. $245,000 revenue loss, public safety department, downtown parking meter program, and anticipated fee increase has been deferred until further notice. If meter fees are resumed in January, the anticipated meter revenue impact for the year is a reduction of $245,000. To rebalance revenues for the offset of the mentioned revenue reductions, other revenue sources have been analyzed and adjusted where possible to avoid an impact to expenditures and service delivery and are proposed for city council in the new policy directive. The proposed 2324 budget amendment provides $760,000 in new capital one-time funds available for city council allocation. With input from department heads, the following allocations are prioritized for city council consideration. $185,000 to complete current capital projects for the police department, library recreation, parking lot improvements. $78,000 to new projects for the police department will be having a state revision visit, and we are not in compliance with a jail alarm, and the state inspector will be checking that, so we are requesting perconstate to approve the request for $35,000. The end of the lease for four vehicles for the traffic parking department is coming down, and the buyout for those are $6,000 for planning. Replace planning building department likes fixtures. Half of their department is dark because their fixtures are not working, so we are requesting to be able to change those fixtures. In admin, city council audiovisual equipment, as the acting city managers mentioned, we want to renovate this chamber, and we want to put a new projector, TVs, and those iPads so that it'll be easily... We're modernized. And for the admin, the HR application software of Niogo. With all these new hirings and recruitments that we've been having, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, I believe we're the only city in Imperial County that does not have this software. I was present at one of the presentations, and this would facilitate a lot of the issues that we have here in the city of Callexico. The proposed budget amendment recommendations from local improvements fund draw on 2324 surplus, the amount of $263,000. The amendment also has a special revenue fund for the library grant update of $233,000 and the donation fund for the library incremented to $2,000. The internal service fund, the retirement fund that I mentioned, $75,000 contribution. The next financial calendar next steps, on December, for December 2024, we have completed year close, and we're in the process, and we are two months ahead from last year. And in that, I would like to thank the finance team because, as most of you know, most of them are new, and they catch up really fast to learn the year-end closing, and I'm very proud of them because we are two months ahead as we were last year. In January, we are requesting the auditors to come in instead of them coming in February or March. So that's a big accomplishment for the finance team. We are expecting in March 2025 for the auditors to do their presentation to the city council. For budget policy actions, in December and January, as mentioned, we will be bringing operating recommendations for water, wastewater, and airport. January, February, we're presenting the second quarter budget report. For the budget development and for 2526, we're anticipating to start that process February and March to bring projections and revenue expenditures cost. And with that said, that is the presentation for this first quarter report. I don't know if you have any questions?
Thank you, Sandy. Do we have any comments before we go to public comments on this item? Do we have any public comments on this?
Jesús Solano?
Jesús Solano, 426 Rosemont, Callexico. I'm going to tell this council, the first rule of common sense, when you fall in a hole, you stop digging. When you fall in a hole, you stop digging. That's common sense, okay? Pertaining to the airport, my suggestion to this council is, close it down. Get a private investor that wants to go in it. Why would we... Are scrambling for funding? Why would we turn around and deposit, repurpose $144,000 to a hole to come out even for this last year and for this year that's coming up? So what's going to happen to the airport because it's going to continue to fall in a hole? What excuse are they going to come up? Is this council, part of this council, going to turn around and then another $150,000, $180,000? They're planning a submitting a strategic plan. They should have done that years ago. They knew about this deficit years ago, and they're just bringing it up right now. It doesn't make sense. And then, on top of that, why the reclassifications of certain job dispositions at the airport? Why would you add employees to a department that's in a hole? Why would you give salary increasement to a department that's in hole? It doesn't make sense. So my suggestion to this council, is just shut it down. If there's an investor, believe me, they will be coming, okay? They will be coming. Now, if you want to turn around and repurpose $144,000, go ahead, but repurpose it to the community center. Get a full-time maintenance person at maintenance for the community center. As it is, we don't have enough staff out there. Does this council have any idea how many residents go in there and out on a daily basis? 300, 400, 300 or 400 on a daily basis? Just multiply that by the week, by the month, by the year. What kind of disservice is this council giving to the community? And believe me, I will not stop. I will keep bringing this issue. Things are going to get serious at the community center pretty soon, okay? So you need to really pay attention to this. So my suggestion to this council, don't transfer that $144,000 to the airport. Just shut it down.
Carla Ibarra?
Voy a hablar en español. Hoy en horas personas de... Para el Parque de Córdoba, el Parque de Córdoba res paga Belarus y ha estado pagando por más de 20 años desde el 2003. A ese parque no se le echó más que un little playground that supposedly was above $100,000, and that's it. Y luego pusieron los baseball fields mal puestos, y es un desastre. Es horrible. Es... Creo que había que habían 800 mil dólares todavía de los CFDs de allí. Pero se me hizo tan curioso que la semana pasada, Miss Thailand, I wasn't here, and Miss Romo were not here, and they just approved, you know, to take the money from the Córdoba Park and put it in the new river. And they said, and you said, Mr. Garcia, Mr. Camilo Garcia, you said, "Oh, we're not going to take the money from the parks," and that's exactly where the money came from. But none of you asked where the money was coming from. The city manager told me, "Oh, we're going to refund that money." But you should have not. Yo no me meto la casa de ustedes y les robo el dinero que han ahorrado por años y digo, luego se lo voy a regresar. Eso es un robo. Y no decirles ustedes están, ustedes no checar, es cometer un crimen. Agarrar el dinero de un CFD es un crimen. Y eso ha estado pasando por muchos años aquí. La otra cosa es, los revenues de la ciudad son 20 millones. Si 16 millones se van a puro payroll, y otros dos millones se van a call pairs, that's $18 million. We have $2 million to play? We don't have money. Everything is gone on payroll. You definitely need to do something with payroll. All the cities reworked their payroll. They reclassified, and they said, "I'm sorry, we're capped, we need to let people go." You don't have a lot of people working in a city that cannot provide. You say, "I'm sorry, but I need to cut from the bud." So that's the city survives. Your employees survive, or the city survives. I'm here being helpful, and it hurts, but that's nature. Pase por todas los parques hoy, pasamos por a community center, John and I, me sentí como que estaba en los 1930s. Me sentí como que estaba en la ciudad de drogadictos de... Es horrible, la ciudad está horrible. El community center está todo lleno de graffiti afuera. It's embarrassing. All the parks, and we have money for the parks, and they supposedly have ARPA money, we have the measure, all kinds of money. We have bonded these funds for so long, and the parks are horrible. They were once pretty when I was little, and we used to go to the Little League games. Now, it's horrible. Please, please put some money in, some money there. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Víctor Rocha?
I don't think I have to repeat my name again. I just wanted to point something out to you. You just have the financial reports for '23, '24 five months late. Five months late. How can you make decisions on money when you don't know where you stand? How is it possible? The ordinance requires the finance director to submit financial reports to the city manager, and the city manager is supposed to report them to you on a monthly basis. That's the ordinance. They're in violation of the ordinance. City chief of police should be enforcing the ordinances. You cannot be selective of which ordinance to enforce. It's the law, it's the city law, that the finance department needs to provide you with monthly financial reports, so you know where you stand at any given moment. You cannot by just giving money away because they recommend. You need to make sure you have the resources before you start dishing them away. Just because they're telling you to do that means they're doing crap. The other issue, quarterly reports are supposed to be done supposedly every three months. It's two months late. I told the city manager, enforce the code. So you guys can be informed, no matter who sits here, should be informed on a monthly basis. You're just shooting from the hip all the time. And that makes us very uncomfortable, because you don't know where you guys stand, and that should be your focus. You... We elected you guys to manage our monies. That's your primary focus, your budget, and it should be zero. Like Mr. Solano said, the airport, I told you that about three months ago. I told you, you're just managing something that is constantly... It's been... I used to manage the airport from the city office. And I know it was in a hole 30 years ago, it continues to be a money pit. So you either do something... My suggestion was you to collect from the US government who's utilizing those facilities. There's the one that is actually open for them because it's international. Then, collect monies from them. Come to an agreement. Then, instead of throwing more money into it, find resources that can keep it open, but where it doesn't cost us because none of us use it. Do you guys use it? So if you don't, why are you throwing money away? And that's what I told you three months ago. And again, I urge you, urge whoever sits here, have your financials report submitted to you on a monthly basis, so you know where you stand at any given moment. And not waiting five months to say, "Oh, by the way, we don't have any money for the Christmas parade, but you had $900,000 in savings." That's what I'm talking about. You denied us something that was accustomed, something that we were encouraging our kids to attend and to participate. Now it's gone because someone just forgot to give you a report that we had extra money, that you could have used that $144,000 to sponsor the parade. So, thank you.
Diana Nuricumbo?
Good evening, Diana Nuricumbo, 1060...
Good evening, Diana Nuricumbo, 1060 Villa Barranca. So on the issue of the budget, I wanted to just kind of speak or point out how in this past election, the people voiced their opinion and the results are there. And I think that looking at this budget, you're looking at an airport that has been at a loss for three years at least, because we don't even know if that's correct. At least three years. So at which point do the council members that were here before, at which point do the professionals that have been hired suggest to abandon the airport? And by abandon, you know what I mean. You know, find something else, like what Mr. Rocha was suggesting, you know, if, if the feds are going to come in. But at what point do we realize that, like Mr. Solano suggested, we're digging a deeper hole? The reason why people didn't elect or reelect some of you is because you are not listening to the people. Okay? That's the reason. You are not listening to the people. You're doing the same thing over and over again. And now you're going to put good money back into a bad operation. And that's what's happening. You had the majority of the people here talking about parks. You have the Measure H, it's also talking about you're going to have some leftover monies from Measure H. People voted for Measure H for the parks, for the swimming pool, for the fire station. That's what people want. So if you have a surplus, invest it in what people are asking you to invest it. You are not listening to the people, but the people are watching. So you have the results. So please listen to the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Bring it back to the council. Any comments from the council?
I do. I have a couple of questions. So we had this PowerPoint. And just for a recommendation in the future, we did not show everything that should have been shown, in my opinion. And that's one of the biggest things that we're all talking about, the airport deficit. In the staff report, it talks about a workout plan. I urge the rest of the council members to not act upon that item until we actually see what the proposed workout plan is. Why wasn't it included right now when we're being asked to allocate further funding to that department? With that said, I'd like to not approve the 140,000 for that. I'd like to ask staff to put together a special workshop and include the community regarding best-case scenario, worst-case scenario for the airport. Best-case scenario being we can work something out with CBP and see if they can take it over and we still have ownership and they take over running it, etc., any fixed or variable costs associated with it. Worst-case scenario is shutting down the department. It's not functioning as it should be. Clearly, it's been on a three-year deficit and we don't know if it's been longer. I don't have those facts, it's not included here. So it could be longer. I'm not okay with allocating those 140. I've gotten a lot of feedback from community members who use our community center. And I've gotten to the point where like, I'm, I think I'm going to go clean it, right? And I'm going to go mop it. But I think that those 140,000 that are suspended in time right now should be allocated to our community center to get them back their custodian full-time and to the graffiti abatement program. We have a lot of graffiti in our city and that's what people want. They want to see a change. They want to see our city getting cleaned. The community center is a very heavily-used building, all day. All day, they see hundreds of people all day. So if we can do that, staff, can we, can we repurpose that right now? So we can approve it? Yeah? No? You need to go look at the numbers, bring it back?
Moving forward with the temp janitor for the, for the community center.
Okay.
With the temp agency.
Okay.
So we are getting Miss Norma her personnel on a temporary basis.
And you have to understand, the funds that we currently have are for one-time items. Bringing an FTE is not just for one year. You would have to add it for the previous years, for further years. So that's something that's an operational item.
So I've been asking about the employee for that, the janitor, and I've been not told that it was coming. So that's where my, my comment comes from. So if we're getting her, the staff, to clean it, fantastic. But I still don't think that the 140,000 should be purposed to a department that we don't even have a workout plan for. We don't have that information. We can't just allocate the money. So if that's something that we have to wait on for us to get the entire information and I don't want the last three years, I'd like the last five years so I can get a good picture of what's been going on in that department. I did ask you, do you have the information that I requested for that item? Yeah? No? Okay. So I, I think that we need to do a special workshop for this department, as I spoke with you and I told you. And I'd like community engagement. We need to see, we need community input and also buy-in. It's very important to hear from the community what they think about the decisions we are planning to make. And I also think that maybe, you know, there's, we have proven in parts and then wait for the workout plan if we can have it in the next two weeks and then plan for a special workshop.
There is an operational plan that's coming back next month.
We had mentioned on December.
In December, right? And, and as I like, and I hear the concern. Maybe it was poor management of the airport, poor whatever it may be, or not bringing enough business or revenues in for the airport, updating fees that have been in place for years and, and not creating that, right? Mr. Moreno brought companies over from Higali that want to build hangars. FEMA has come down that wants to build a facility. I have reached out to Ms. Followme to see what customs lease option is and revisit that thing so we can get back on track. You need to understand as, as well, it's their only international airport in the county. If we lose the license to the airport, we're never going to get that back. And if FEMA is willing to come down and put trailers for disaster relief, fuel and whatnot because we're so close to the border, then let's tap into those funds so we can make up for that cost.
Well, that's the thing.
We just spent 16, I mean, I think I reached out to Ms. Followme regarding some, some grants that were given to the airport for the runway, taxiway, so on and so forth, right? Maybe it's just we need to revisit that, which is going to be, come back next month. And if it's not feasible, I'm all for moving forward.
Yeah.
Let's just look at the different options that we can bring to the table and let the community get involved and say, "Hey, this is the best scenario. If not, then on to the next."
Yeah. All, all I want to see is what can we do? Because right now it's just words and ideas and there's no projects, there's no permits, there's nothing happening. And for someone to come build and do all these things, it takes time. It's not going to happen in the next six months. So we need to make decisions that are going to help our budget. So, yeah.
But we need to be optimistic that there are businesses reaching out. And I have communicated with their legal and our legal to at least get something going, right? I'm, I'm trying the best I can with what I have.
No, 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 and that's understandable.
And, you know.
We're trying to get us afloat.
Yeah, no one is saying that, no one's trying. We're, we're giving direction on what we can do. We're seeing it out here and then there's staff and I totally understand where, you know, you want to keep the department afloat, etc. But sometimes, well, it hasn't been operating, you know, out of the red in the last three years. Who knows if it's longer? So we need that information in order to make an educated decision. And 140,000 is a lot of money. 5,000, it's not our money, it's taxpayer money. So we need to make an educated decision, even if it's a dollar. So please, like I said to the rest of the council, we need more information to act on that item. Because we have a lot of departments bleeding also and in need that are much more used than the airport at this time. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to concur with the council member Lisa. I mean, what is the benefits that this airport has? I mean, that's, that's, it's, it's, the conditions are horrible. What initiatives do the pilots and visitors have when they arrive there? These are things that we need to look at and, you know, just the fact that, I mean, the airport is, is falling apart. I mean, I was going to pay a visit at the airport today, but I didn't have the chance. But I want to pay a visit hopefully tomorrow. And regarding to the 140,000 dollars, I mean, I don't want to give it to a, a, a place of condition that is not invitable to people. And if it's not making money, I don't know, is it making money? Is this airport making money? How many, how many pilots, visitors, how many planes arrives? What's the incentives for these pilots? I know in Yuma, when a pilot arrives at their, at their airport, the vehicle is lent to them to go to the resident, to the business areas, to go to restaurants and so forth. I mean, we, we need to figure this one out. So as of right now, I wouldn't pay anything to the airport.
Anybody else?
Yeah, Mr. Guterres, were you going to say something? You want to add something?
No.
Okay. So, so the 140,000, 140,000, how trivial is that if you, in other words, you need it or you don't? How trivial is that? For this court or for?
To get that department back up afloat. It's been in the deficit for the past three years. And then we, keep in mind, COVID, pandemic, no flights, inflation. All these things occurred that we have no control over. And unfortunately, it put us in a hole. As Miss Roma had mentioned, you know, when we were doing our agenda briefing, that was the only airport open and the vicinity to allow supplies to come in.
So a portion of that goes to a car, right? $55,000 goes to?
And, and a portion of those 140 is going to vehicle replacements. If you see the vehicles driving around town that are for the city, I saw one with a marker number on it and I'm thinking, we need to take some pride, right? And, and update our vehicles and, and if we're able to purchase something to give staff, city, a boost of morale to be in a new vehicle and, and to show that the city is progressing, some of that goes towards that and the rest goes towards the deficit.
So, so you, so it appears by your report that you inherited this problem based on the way you've mentioned. However, what, what plan do you have to?
Oh, that's the finances bringing an operational plan for the airport. And I have Miss Thailandia mentioned, let's look at all revenues and, and see what's feasible, what can we do, how we can change things.
Incentives.
And if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. But at least we brought all options back to the table, right?
Right.
That's, and, and there has been some rehabilitation to the airport, Mr. Lagaspi. There has been taxi runways repaved, the whole runway was repaved. There is some areas that need work that possibly FEMA could even come in and redo for us, right? There, there's a bunch of options out there. We just got to pick what, pick and choose if it's feasible for our city now.
Have you reached out to FAA for those, those grants? Because all this out there for?
And, and I have not. And that's something I can talk to Ms. Followme about, to Sandy about and see what, what options are out there. But let's, again, I know what, Miss Thailandia requested some information. Staff was trying to put that together for us before the meeting. Unfortunately, we didn't get to it, but I can bring that back on December 4th.
So, so it appears, I mean, I'm in concurrence here with what, you know, 140,000 for something that's not really going to, right? We don't know that. But I think if, probably in, in, in foresight, in hindsight, I think if you prepare something perhaps maybe in the near future, that will, that will have a plan for, to address those efficiencies. I think we, we will probably make a better adjustment on that and, and vote on it accordingly now. I don't know if you, you could do that. Do you have enough time for that? How much time do you need that? And I'm, and I'm not trying to, I'm here where if we save that airport, we don't save. I think, yeah, we have to trim the fat and the steak, right? If it's not working, shut it down. I'm okay with that. Trust me. Not working, not working. But however, it's, do you, do you need 140,000 dollars to continue through fiscal year? Or do you need it now? Or can you wait a couple more months? That's my question.
The 140,000 would be to cover that, some of the expenses from last year and for the six months.
And if you don't, then what happens? You go under, right? And you cut it down?
Well, we won't shut it down.
I'm sorry?
I mean, it would go down. And we would bring that plan that we're saying we'll bring in December.
Okay.
The portion of it is to buy a car.
Yeah.
And it was supplies.
Right.
So with that, I, I think it's really important that we have discussions. We've got to keep in mind that once we undo certain, I mean, something, you know, it's really difficult to bring it back. And I hear that, that concerns about being a money pit and being a, something that is a disadvantage to us. But I think everything that we have could be an asset also. We just have to make sure that we do the due diligence. You know, we do the plan, we bring it back to the community. You know, many cities have that as an asset. And I still see it as an asset. Okay? So, excuse me, you know. So, you know, I, I do agree that we have to really, really look at this, have a plan. Have a plan. You know, like Miss Lagaspi, Miss Lagaspi said, when you go to other airports and they have their FBOs, those FBOs are run by private companies, okay? Well, let's look at privatizing some of those operations. Let's have that, you know, let's have private sector look into that. Let's go into a partnership. So we avoid doing away with an asset. Because it looks at every time, you know, that we talk about these things, it's doing away with what we have. And once that happens, it's gone. Right? And it is true, it's the only international airport. And that should mean something. And then also, we've done some work there through grants, through, through FAA. You know, what are the responsibilities on that also? I mean, are there any, you know, responsibilities on that? So let's not jump into conclusions. Yes, I also want to have more conversation. I don't want to prove this money. But I do want to really talk about this, you know, council, community, investment. You know, I, I hear you, you know, chief, on talking to these companies. Let's look at that before, before we do away with that.
They bring up that P3, right? Because this is a P3, public-private investment company that can potentially bring more. And, and talk about, the last grant was 2015 for 3.3 to do the rehab for the whole runway. And that had been completed now nine years. So, you know, so there has been some work done there. It's just, let's look at everything that we can to see how we can move forward and keep in it, if not, then.
Do you have any company in mind for public, P3, a public-private?
There is a company from Empressora, from Higali that had reached out. There's another gentleman that reached out to say, "Hey, I have more planes. I want to put them in, in Caléxico." Even the Gobernadora, Marina de Pilar, she, when she shows up to the city, she's, she's waiting in her Tahoe for the plane to get there and she's like, "Why don't you guys build something? You guys should build something." You know, so there, there is some options. But at least we, we need to look at the, the city as a business and see what's feasible for the city and conduct ourselves as a business to bring in additional revenues. If we need to keep this afloat.
So, so the business model you're referring to, how does that benefit the city? Because this?
So we have the property. They would build on their dime. We lease, we make a contract with these P3s and we're able to facilitate their, their, we charge them for the fuel, for whatever it may be. So we're creating some sort of revenue. And, and again, there's other companies that we can reach out to the city of Imperial and say, "Hey, why don't you bring your flight school down here? We'll give you an incentive. Let's make some money." There's a crop duster that flies out every evening that apparently he hasn't paid his business. I'm going to...
So, all of that.
Make a visit, right? There, there's, there's options out there that we can keep this, you know?
Well, first and foremost, most important, we need to be honest and transparent with what's going on. We need to know the state of that department and then we build from there. We need to know a timeline. These are ideas, we're talking FEMA, we're talking bringing here, bringing there. I need to know deliverables. We need a timeline. So in the workout plan, please provide a timeline. I think the discussion's been real long. I need a timeline with actual deliverables. Projects take time. So if we're going to build something, that takes years and I need to know how much money I have to be putting into a department that's in a deficit. So it's very important that when you guys bring us back that workout plan, please provide timelines and actual deliverables. Thank you. That's all I want to add. Thank you. That's all I want to add.
And I'm all for that. But again, we need to add those pieces of the puzzle, right? We need to have the planning director, we need to have help, we need to have someone there to push these projects forward so they're able to help staff come with these asks and show you what actually is going on. And if I don't have those, I'm having more of a burden put on me, on staff, on the people that are here to ask for more work. When you look at the board and you look at these monies, right? There's 22 positions that are not filled. 22 cost-saving positions. Five of those positions are supervisor positions, management positions. Say we were to fill those positions, what does that do to our reserves? So we have to be careful with how we're approaching this. But there are vital pieces of the puzzle that are missing in the city that we need to get on board so we can bring these projects to fruition within a reasonable time. Not six, three months down the road, you know? And I'm more than being transparent and helping, help you, help the public put this information out there.
Thank you.
One last thing also. I didn't see the $250,000 from ICTC that they committed to helping out. So if we can...
Yeah, it's in the, it was in the staffing part.
Okay, so?
In the resolution, we are implementing it in the resolution.
Okay, so just to make sure that on the parking meters?
Parking meters and the...
Traffic control.
Yes.
Yeah, so just make sure that that's included.
Señora Falomir, sería muy bueno que nos presentara un historial del aeropuerto. Quiero que sepan que aquí estuvo una empresa importantísima y pueden localizar al licenciado Javier Rivas, que es una persona promotor a nivel internacional. Trajo esa empresa porque quiere rentar el aeropuerto, hacerlo list. Estuvimos sacando cuentas y si recibimos 100,000 dólares, 40,000 dólares, que por cierto nunca perdió, nunca perdió el aeropuerto, en plena pandemia nunca perdió el aeropuerto, nunca. Perdió todo mundo, el aeropuerto no. Ganó el aeropuerto. Y con una pompa nada más de eso que le echan a los aviones. Siempre se me olvida cómo se le llama lo que le echan a los aviones. Y así ganó. ¿Saben qué? Esta persona, búsquenla. Se fue por tanto relajo que tenemos aquí en Caléxico. Le digo que le dio miedo. Pero él nos dejaba una ganancia de medio millón de dólares. O sea, teníamos solamente un empleado, tenemos ahí. Y ese empleado que tiene como veintitantos años, Falomir, si me equivoco, dime. Y hay otro muchacho que por ahí andaba riendo. Oye, pues tampoco nunca le hemos metido. Nunca le han metido nada. El aeropuerto, todo lo que es el restaurante y todo se quemó. Hubo un empresario que vino, lo voy a hacer y lo vamos a poner. Todavía estaba Miguel Figueroa. ¿Y qué pasó? Se van. Okay? Ahora, los acuerdos internacionales, que yo sí los he leído, están muy claros. Tenemos acuerdos internacionales federales y no nomás es decir, ay, quítanlo y cierrenlo. No. Tenemos acuerdos internacionales con los Estados Unidos. Quiero que sepan que este aeropuerto tiene claves para el caso de una guerra. Aquí tenemos muchas cosas en este aeropuerto. Pero independientemente de eso, una licencia perdida para toda la vida, ya no la vuelves a recuperar. Lo mismo pasó con las licencias de las, de las, de las, de acuerdas, contreras, deercos que querían quitar la licencia a las únicas ambulancias que tenemos. Entonces, estamos ahorita en una frontera, tenemos problemas. El aeropuerto, señoras y señores, deja dinero. Ahora, no tenemos el personal, no tenemos dinero, no tenemos desarrolladores, no tenemos gente experta. Ah, bueno, pues entonces hazlo list. Eso sí se puede hacer. Y ya vinieron a ofrecer. Pero, repito, se van. Entonces, necesitamos a alguien que le tome el tiempo para poder estar con esas personas. Todo esto es tiempo, lo pueden hacer, claro que sí. Qué gacho, no? O sea, ahora Caléxico también hasta ni Aeropuerto Internacional va a tener. No, no tenemos que quitar lo que ya tenemos, tenemos que hacerlo grande. Ahora bien, yo traje a un experto, que lamentablemente ya se retiró, pero ahí está, que hizo el aeropuerto de Orange County. Él hizo varias obras aquí en Caléxico y vino y trajo a personas y vino a este aeropuerto. Y dijo, Gloria, este aeropuerto tiene un futuro impresionante. Si lo hacen obviamente más alto, para llegar a aviones más, pues un poquito más grandes. Porque ahorita los aviones que llegan son chicos. Pero oye, a veces llegan aviones ahí de un millón de dólares. Gente que nada más viene y paga por estacionarse y se va Mexicali, no sabrá de dónde se va. Pero todo ese dinerito está entrando. Ese informe lo puede tener la señora Falomir, de lo que estoy hablando. Y este señor de Orange County, arquitecto, que hizo ese aeropuerto, si no sé si lo conozcan ustedes, dijo, es cuestión nada más de ponerle la, que, la, ¿cómo se llama? El pavimento ese que debe ser más grueso o algo así y extender un poquito más para allá el aeropuerto, que también se puede, el condado lo puede hacer. O sea, hay muchas cosas que se pueden hacer, claro. Pero por favor, o sea, no es que cancellemos lo poquito que tenemos. Busquemos la manera. Estamos ahorita en un quarter, señoras y señores. Esto nada más es un avance de un presupuesto que se está realizando de un nuevo año fiscal. Es todo. Ahora, este presupuesto que ustedes ven aquí, tiene un superávit de 900,000, creo, ¿no? Este presupuesto cuando lo autorizamos, se hizo con mucha conciencia por la razón de que no sabíamos si íbamos a tener ingresos o no íbamos a tener ingresos. Imagínate tú que hagas un presupuesto y digas, vamos a hacer esto y vamos a poner y vamos a gastar y esto y el otro. Y a la hora de la hora, no recibe los ingresos. Ese es un problema, te ves peor. Pero gracias a Dios, hubo más ingresos. No hubo en taxis los ingresos, fueron por otras razones, ya las miren. Pero tenemos ingresos. Ahora, se están repartiendo esos ingresos, sí. Viene, para conocimiento de ustedes, ya me hablaron de Sacramento, una auditoría nueva para Caléxico. Todavía no terminamos la que tenemos, que estamos hasta el cuello. Lo más importante que tenemos que salvar en este, aquí en Caléxico, es que no gastemos nuestra reserva. Porque si gastemos nuestra reserva, entonces sí, nos va muy mal, señores. Estamos ahorita con multas. Tenemos que pagar, o sea, no podemos seguir pagando multas. Entonces, si nosotros no hacemos el presupuesto, esto lo podemos detener y nos vamos a un workshop y qué pasa y qué es lo que hay. Esto es nada más de pasada para que ellos sigan trabajando. Tienen que seguir trabajando el presupuesto. Este no es el final. El próximo, el próximo quarter, que es en enero, puede hacer que a la mejor ni tengamos ingresos. Eso es lo que está pasando. Entonces, estamos discutiendo un presupuesto y estamos metiendo cosas tan importantes como quitar un aeropuerto. O sea, de veras, sinceramente, este, yo pienso que tenemos que investigar primero antes, si realmente podemos quitar un aeropuerto antes de abrir la boca, con todo respeto. Entonces, la señora Falomir, yo le pido, le suplico, señor Contreras, y por el bien de los muchachos que van a entrar nuevos, los nuevos consejeros, que hagan una presentación de lo que ha sido el aeropuerto, los permisos, lo que tenemos nosotros comprometidos con el gobierno federal, con el CBP, con muchas partes. O sea, hacer un aeropuerto no nomás es así. Y ver la posibilidad si lo podemos hacer list. Hay gente interesada, es un americano, yo nomás lo conocí por un video que me pusieron, pero ahí está. Búsquen al licenciado Javier Rivas, promotor industrial aquí en Estados Unidos, en China, en todas partes. Necesitamos esa gente, no la tenemos aquí. Hay un director de desarrollo social, de desarrollo económico, no, no hay aquí. Este, la ciudad no es un negocio para empezar, la ciudad es pública. Los dineros públicos no tienen nada que ver con los dineros empresariales. Un empresario y un político público es muy diferente. Se piensa conforme se trabajan las leyes en la política pública. No es lo mismo. Entonces, yo le suplico, de veras, con todo respeto, yo ya voy para fuera, pero deseo de todo corazón que les vaya muy bien a la próxima mesa directiva y también que salga adelante Caléxico. Y la única manera es hacer las cosas estudiadas como debe de ser y no trayendo afuera conceptos y gente que quiere hacer su voluntad en Caléxico. Sinceramente, yo pienso que podemos salir adelante, sí, al cien. Y yo sé que la próxima mesa directiva va a trabajar mejor que la mía. Porque veo que hay gente que está unida, y eso es muy importante. Cuando se unen y trabajan, no con compromisos ajenos, con el bien de la ciudad, yo sé que les va a ir muy bien. Entonces, por favor, vean muy claramente que esto nada más es un quarter. Es lo único que necesitamos, es aceptar esto para que puedan seguir trabajando en la administración y encargarle a la señora Falomir que nos haga una presentación de lo que ha sido el aeropuerto y buscar los medios para poderlo engrandecer, ese aeropuerto, y sentirnos orgullosos de él. Nosotros no tenemos la capacidad, Caléxico, para poder salir adelante. No podemos hacer los hangares. Tenemos 16 hangares. No hemos subido los precios de los hangares. Desde cuando ando detrás, desde Miguel y luego la señora Colio, y la señora Falomir lo conoce, si yo soy bien metiche ahí en el aeropuerto. ¿Sabe qué me dijo el señor este que está ahí? Se me olvidó el nombre, señora Falomir. Ajá, Argüelles. ¿Sabe qué me dijo el día que? Porque yo a cada rato voy. Oiga, señora Romo, le agradezco su presencia, ¿qué me dijo? Nunca ha venido un Siri Consol aquí. Yo dije, ¿qué? O sea, ¿qué quiere decir? Perdón, pero ¿qué quiere decir? Que no hay interés. Créanmelo, es un excelente, excelente negocio, un aeropuerto, pero necesitamos más hangares. Tenemos una lista de más de 30 personas, no sé, no sé ahorita la señora Falomir, para poder rentar un hangar. Estaba viendo la señora Falomir pedir un gran para hacer más, más, este, ¿cómo se llaman estos lugares donde se ponen los aviones? Los hangares, ¿no? Eso es lo que también necesitamos. Hubo una persona aquí en Mexicali que quería hacer los hangares, pero lo quería como negocio para él y por eso no se aceptó. Entonces, el negocio es de Caléxico. Entonces, los hangares lo tenemos que hacer nosotros. Podemos hacer un hangar a cuenta de, a cuenta de renta, pero no podemos hacer un hangar para dárselo a otro y el otro gane. O sea, no se trata de eso. Pero sí podemos conseguir los recursos para hacer más hangares. Tenemos capacidad para más de 60 hangares y solamente tenemos 16. Perdón, mayor, haberme extendido. Este, les pido una disculpa y este, yo estoy a favor, hago la moción para que se acepte este quarter.
Y corrección, si estaba ahí señora, en el aeropuerto.
Sí, yo sé, pero eso fue al principio. Eso fue al principio cuando entramos.
So, there is a motion, or any other comment from the council?
Mayor. Two more public comments.
They have not spoken before? On this item? Okay. Go ahead.
Berta Carreño.
Berta Carreño, 1141, Second Street, aquí en Caléxico. Y la razón por la que decidí hablar en este momento es porque al mirar el reporte de los estados financieros o de lo que se pretende presentar en el futuro, me llamó la atención que se va a presentar sobre el agua y el gasto operacional de la planta de agua. Que aparentemente volvemos otra vez con la misma historia y, por favor, les pedimos anteriormente que nos consideraran a nosotros los residentes, consideraran nuestra opinión, consideraran cuál es nuestra postura. Porque, acuérdense, se debatió mucho el asunto del agua y coincidimos en que no se podía hacer un aumento que agravara la situación económica de los residentes que de por sí está absolutamente precaria. Con todos los aumentos de precios, con la inflación que tenemos en el momento, pensar en aumentar los servicios del agua sería algo terrible. Y eso lo pedimos nosotros antes de las elecciones. Le suplicamos que, por favor, nos consideraran como parte de el equipo que tiene que discutir este asunto del agua. Porque de una vez les aclaramos, si esa va a ser la postura de la ciudad otra vez, de aumentar las tarifas, aquí se va a llenar de gente. Eso se los aseguramos. Y no queremos que eso suceda, o sí queremos. Eso ya depende de ustedes como consilio. Solamente considerenos a nosotros, los residentes, como parte importante en la ecuación. Muchas gracias.
Blanca Morales.
Good evening, City Council, Blanca Morales, 1150 Rosa Street. You know, I am listening to Mr. Contreras, City Manager. I think I have a suggestion that maybe going through the commissioners to further discuss at length what kind of a plan we can help you with. As Mrs. Roman said, that the City of Caléxico is not business oriented, which is true, but we got some new members that are coming on board that are business oriented. And I think that this is something that the bid may be able to help you and maybe some other people here that have been business owners as well that can help you with that. But I don't agree with closing the airport, just shutting it down right now at this time. I have had business partners that have asked me about that airport that are flying into Imperial Airport. So there is definitely opportunity there. We just need to sit down and discuss it at length. Thank you.
So I bring this back, bring it back to the council. There was a first, do I have a second?
What was the motion?
To approve it.
Approve the report.
Okay.
So, I second that, so just a little.
Mayor Camilo García. Mayor Protem Javier Moreno.
Yes.
Councilmember Gloria Romo.
Yes.
Councilmember Victor Legaspi.
Yes.
Councilmember Lisa Tailenda.
No.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Now we move on to item 13. Thank you.
Good, very good. So move.
We're waiting. So, and this is for the 45th Annual Farmworker Appreciation Breakfast. Approval of 2,223,026 cents from Fund Number 111. Euro Fund and Fund Number 231, speech for city staff in kind services.
Thank you for this item. I have a motion to approve.
I have a second. Comments before we take another?
The speaker, I want to say something.
We want to say something?
Yeah.
Yes, I just want to thank the City Council, Mayor, and members. The 45th Annual Farmworker Breakfast is a very important event here for Caléxico. We are very proud that it is housed here in Caléxico. And thank you again for the sponsorship and your continued support of this event. And there's flyers in the back inviting you all to attend. It's Thursday, December 5th. At midnight, we'll start the presentation. And we're going to serve about 3,000 farmworkers their annual Christmas tamales and pan dulce and coffee. So, are all welcome to attend and thank you so much for the in-kind donation to the support of the Farmworker Breakfast.
And thank you for your patience, thank you for waiting.
You are so welcome.
Is there going to be menudo also?
I don't know, we have to look at our budget.
Thank you. So there is a first and a second, roll call.
Mayor Camilo García.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Javier Moreno.
Yes.
Councilmember Gloria Romo.
Yes.
Councilmember Victor Legaspi.
Yes.
Councilmember Lisa Tailenda.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Now we move to the emergency item, 13A. Adopted resolution of the City Council, the City of Caléxico approving an amendment to the standard agreement to the 2020 Community Development Block Grant, Program Coronavirus Response Round 2 and 3 in the amount of 170,982 for Fire Station Number 2 Rehabilitation Project.
So, we were supposed to bring this item last meeting, it didn't meet the deadline. We're waiting for Ms. Pollak to send the new resolution form to move the fund from one account to another and get it resubmitted to the state so we can start the reimbursement process. We signed these last, this past week. And it brings us to the council to adopt the resolution for the City of Caléxico approving the amendment to the standard agreement of the 2020 Community Development Block Grant for Fire Station Number 2.
For approval.
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Mayor Camilo García. Mayor Camilo García.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Javier Moreno.
Yes.
Councilmember Gloria Romo.
Yes.
Councilmember Victor Legazpi.
Yes.
Councilmember Lisa Talenda.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Now we move on to informational items. Item 14, receiving file library board of trustees minutes for meeting on July 29, 2024. So just to, and then also number 15, informational items. Heber Park Expansion Project Expenditure Report dated October 31, 2021. I would say any comments on any of those items? And that, move on, to future agenda items.
No, no, and number 15. 15 international.
I think there was an informational for the Heber Expansion project that Falomir had submitted.
Okay, so.
Good evening mayor and council members. During our last city council meeting, it was requested that the city provide an expenditure report for Heber Park. As Commissioner, sorry, Chair Ureña from our Community Services Commission said earlier, the grant was received, it was an 8.5 million dollar grant. It's reimbursable, so anytime we spend, the city pays for and then we request reimbursement. As of right now, the expenditures have been for either advertising when we went out to bid for an architect engineering firm as well as the, we had a pro chair who was assisting us earlier on. Those are also some services, engineering services. And also when we submitted, when we started this project, we needed to submit an application to the Imperial Liberation District to make sure that we were having enough power for Heber Park. So we went ahead and submitted an application. They came back and said that we needed to do some improvements. So the 741,000 that has been spent out of the 8.5 have been for those services. Right now, we still have a balance of 7.7 million dollars to continue with the project. Back in June, I believe, the city council had decided to go back to the state. We came here and presented three options. Option number one was the building only, option number two was the park and option number three was to continue looking for grants. We met with this, well, I met with the state, submitted a request in writing, but unfortunately, as Commissioner Ureña mentioned, this was a competitive grant. Therefore, we as a city, in order to continue, we have to do the deliverables that the grants specify. So the grant, the deliverables were the multipurpose gym as well as improvements of the park outside. So we are not able at this time to do any changes to the scope of work or reduce the scope of work.
So we've been reducing everything that they had said that we could reduce?
Well, the reduction is more like, for example, if the grant application said that I was going to put 10 picnic tables, we can reduce it to five, but that still there is going to be picnic tables there. What we, Mr. Contreras and I did, we met with our architect engineer and we informed him about what the state informed us. So what they're doing, what he's doing is going back to his team to see if there's any possibility of maybe reducing the size of the multipurpose gym or the initial is have a multipurpose gym, but also like, for example, a craft room for other activities, maybe eliminate that or eliminate a restroom. So we're going to be having a meeting with them in the next couple of days to see what concepts they can do for the amount of money that we have on hand.
Thank you. Comments from the council? So now with that, we move to future agenda items, starting from.
Okay. Definitely the speed bumps, that's been a year of people coming up and requesting, so let's expedite that. Especially earlier this morning, there was a, there was a car accident right close to our house around 7:30 in the morning, so I'm not sure what the cause of the accident was, but I'm sure there was a speed involved. So let's really push that speed bump at the Cordoba Park area and the other residential that was mentioned. Patrol officers regarding to Cordoba Park, I know I asked about it two weeks ago and I know you've been, you've been working on that, so let's continue with that. The Heber Park expansion, maybe in two months, let's have a town hall meeting regarding to how that is coming along. So we'll give it two months and maybe have that town hall meeting on the west side. Regarding to, let's see, the commissioners. I know that I would sure hate to lose the commissioners that we have right now. Somehow, see how we can work on keeping these. I know that the next meeting is going to be in March for the next commissioners meeting, so that's a long ways from now. So let's see how we can get together and work up a policy or, you know, regarding to our commissioners. Kind of revise, look at, look at it together and see what we can do or can be done. Yeah, the other day we had a economic development commissioners meeting that did not happen and I'm hearing the same complaint over and over that the commissioners, there's no quorum. So we have to have, I agree, interviews for these commissioners. And, you know, regarding to the incentive pay, that's something that we need to see through the policy and through the attorney, if, if, you know, if we need to remove the 50 dollars, we got to remove the 50 dollars. We're going to get the people that really want to work for the city and these commissioners. So let's look in that, let's, let's look into this together, come on. And other than that, that's about it. Even though we approved the budget or the, what was brought up, the budget, let's definitely look into the airport, see what improvement that can be done and, and let's not lose any thoughts on that, let's continue working on that. You know, the incentives, the conditions, the cost of the hangars. I mean, there was a lot of good idea that Mrs. Romo brought up, Councilmember Romo, so let's go ahead and work on that.
When you mentioned the town hall on the west side.
For the, the Heber?
Yeah, the Heber Fancy Park.
Yeah.
Wouldn't it be better just to have it here than the chambers?
Is it best to have it here in the chambers?
Well, we can look into some.
Yeah, we can look both, either here or west side, whatever.
Okay. And again, a goal of that park where we're going to meet with the architect, Ms. Rosalba helping us with those grants is hopefully to free up those additionals to add to that 7.7 and get that park to what it initially was, right? And hopefully when Felicity comes down from the state and we have a meeting as all department heads, how we, and see how we can maybe add those to, to make that park the way it should have been.
Thank you, mayor. Me estaba corté, estaba mirando Contreras y me estoy viendo que los, los revenues que estamos recibiendo la mayoría son de la ambulancia. Un 180 mil, ¿no? Yo creo que es lo que hemos recibido más alto ahorita.
Pues han estado ocupados los muchachos.
Pues los felicito, ¿eh? Ahorita lo estaba mirando y era de las ambulancias, recibíamos 40, imagínate. Bueno. A report in Caléxico Internacional, eh, por no, que ya lo habíamos pedido a la señora Falomir si son tan amables para que expliquen de qué se trata, un plan. ¿Cómo se dice eso de lo que están pidiendo los topes? ¿Se dice the speed rooms o cómo se dicen los topes?
Speed bumps.
Pues lo que sea, pero administrador, díganos cuándo eso va a suceder en el parque este Cordoba, así de ponerle una fecha. Eso es cosa de la policía, de obras públicas y del administrador. Se tiene que poner de acuerdo para hacer eso. Y este, pero si pudiéramos la próxima junta decir cuándo, cómo se va a hacer, porque sí, sí es urgente, este, que lo pongan, ¿no? Una, un space, space en la agenda para la Chinesa Association Group va a presentar lo que es el daño nuevo chino. El next, creo que es en febrero o finales de enero, pero ellos van a traer un proyecto para hacer y celebrar con la ciudadanía asiática de aquí de Caléxico, una presentación de momento que ya les va a tocar a la nueva mesa directiva. Es algo muy bonito honrar también a nuestros, a nuestras gentes que han vivido aquí, ¿verdad? Que son de nacionalidad asiática. Y este, y solicitarla a usted, administrador, una plática, aunque sea una plática con el superintendente de Caléxico, Yono Facebook District para ver, lo dudo, pero bueno, a ver, si podemos hacer algo para arreglar las banquetas de las escuelas de los niños y pues la pintada es así, señora Falomir, yo creo que la tenemos que aventar nosotros, ¿no?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you, mayor. An update on Rodriguez Park and the MOU, I guess, agreement with the neighbors across the street. On that one. An update on the Cordoba Park, in terms of project and timelines. Also, Proposition 36 chief, what's the plan for that? The new law that changes Prop 36-36 for, I think it goes along with the purse project. Somehow, somehow, I see it aligned there, I don't know, but maybe you can update on that. I know Prop 36 was going to, we're going to put those signs downtown so people cannot be warned and before, as you know, before we couldn't even tell them to leave now. Prop 36 has all kinds of, you know, bells and whistles there, please get an update on that. And also, if we can have a, an idea or a plan, what's, what's, now that the Christmas holiday season is going to be, what's going to be happening with Imperial Avenue in terms of traffic congestion? I know we're going to get some money from ICTC on that and maybe a, some kind of idea what's, what's that going to look like in terms of, of resources and traffic controllers and that. That's all I have, thank you.
I would like an update on the demo for the old Tortas and Beer building, 311 Caesar Chavez. And then a informational item from the chief of police regarding the downtown task, how that's going, what the efforts are in regards with other agencies on, on that force. Just an update, where we're at.
Informational on.
Yeah, on the downtown detail.
One thing that I forgot, last council meeting, I had asked about the handicap sidewalks. You were going to give a report on it, if not, if you don't have it available, can we have that for the next council meeting?
And also the informational item on the curbs, on the red curbs.
The curves, remember that we had in the previous agenda, the presentation.
Yes, thank you.
I know you have a lot of already items on your plate, but just, just also an update on the, what's going on with the building, the former orthopedic clinic. I know that, you know, has been, you know, fenced, but what's going on, you know, maybe looking into the cleanup or whatever it is that we need to do there. And then before we adjourn, I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Enjoy yourselves, enjoy with your family, don't eat a lot and if you eat a lot, we'll invite you so, to join you. But anyway, enjoy your holidays, thank you. Meeting adjourned at 10:14.